Okay. Sorry, everyone. We're having a few council members that's having some issues getting in. I'm working with them to see if we can help them get into the meeting. So give me just a moment. If anybody sees Brad come in, let me know. There's David. Do we have Brad in yet?
Yeah.
There he is. Okay, I think we're ready to get started here. Okay, first thing I'd like to do is to call to order the meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Can everyone please say the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. Good evening. Tonight's council meeting is being conducted in virtually in accordance with the Governor Holcomb's executive orders. This meeting is being livestreamed. Additionally, the council has provided the public with opportunities to participate in this meeting by submitting comments to the city's website. Any comments received have been distributed to the council and will be included in the minutes of tonight's agenda. Because we are conducting this meeting virtually, due to inclement weather, the council has removed several items from the original agenda, which the council anticipates bringing back at its March meeting. First thing I'd like to do is to have a roll call here so that way we can see who is on to make sure that we have anybody, council members and staff. So what I'll do is I'll first call out the council members. Councilor Zimmerman, are you with us?
Here.
Councilor Kobel?
Here.
Councilor Vare?
Here.
Councilor Weingart?
Here.
Councilor DeLong?
Here.
Councilor Peterson?
Here.
Councilor George?
Here.
And I'm Selena Stoller. I'm here, that's for the record's purpose. Could any staff please identify themselves as well?
Hi, good evening, Chris Kreisel.
Megan Baumgartner.
Jesse Beauchelle Planning and Zoning.
Tony Begato Planning and Zoning.
Ashley Elkhart Communications.
Monica Halt, Health Department.
Jason Taylor, Engineering.
Elliot Holtgren, Deputy Mayor.
Sarah Sanquez, Parks and Recreation.
Tracy Geener, IT.
Okay. Given that we have several things that are that then, like I said, the agenda has been shortened. We will move to the Finance Committee Report. Or wait a second, we need to do. Yo, we'll move to the Finance Committee Report. Councilor Weingart, could you please present a Finance Committee Report?
Certainly, thank you. President Stoller, real brief items. We have one item in the Budget Financial, Request to Approve Finance Agreement for the City's Annual Fleet Loan at a tremendously low interest rate. Very favorable to the city, certainly reflective of our conservative financial leadership. Also, just reporting back on our cash reserve balance, we projected to be at $15,792,169. In fact, it's going to be more higher than that. We closed our balance at $17,364,257. So when you look at the, you know, our discipline of 50% of net property tax, we've got excess cash reserves, right about $3.9 million right now, above and beyond our threshold. So a really good position. Lisa and her team's done an outstanding job. I've also spoken with our audit firm, BKD, about anything that I felt was in need of taking a look at on our audited financial statement. The only thing I really mentioned was something that's that's true with any small entrepreneurial organization that's working on separation of duties. So all in all, we're in a great financial position going into 2021 and in a good position to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. For the Plan Commission Report, as opposed to giving an overview of the large planning and zoning section, Councilor Peterson will give a summary of how the Plan Commission reviewed each item as they are brought up on tonight's agenda. So he will be providing us with that as we move through the agenda tonight. The next item on the update is the Health Department update. I'll turn it over to Public Health Director Monica Haltz. Monica, could you please provide us with an update? Thank you.
Yes, hello, councilors. This is Monica, and I can give you an update today. I'm just going to give you a COVID update primarily, but if there are questions that you have about other aspects of the Health Department, I'm happy to provide that information as well. Regarding the COVID situation, we are continuing, as is most of the country as well as the state, we continue to see decreases right now since our peak around the new year with cases of COVID. We have compiled a total of 9,558 cases of COVID in Fishers residents to date. So almost 10% of our population, or approximately 10% of our population has been confirmed to have been infected so far. We also have sustained a total of 93 deaths that have been confirmed as well due to COVID for the City of Fishers. Our percent positivity rate and our case incidence rate have been going down since their peak. We've seen significant decreases. Our peak on our percent positivity was on January 11th, and we were at 24% at that time. We have gone all the way down. Right now, we're at 9.1%. So it's a pretty significant decline in the space of a month. And in our case incidence rates, we had a high total of number of cases in a day of 172, if you can believe that, on December 28th. But currently, our average for a 14-day period, we're seeing about 31 cases per 100,000, the population, which is approximately 31 cases per day on average over the last 14 days. And we continue to see that go down week over week. The last time we were anywhere close to these numbers was around Halloween, as far as where we've come and where we've been. And at that time, we were on a rapid rise, and we made the decision to cancel Boobash. So that's about where we're at on the decline. So we're still in our significant risk category, but we're getting actually close enough to the level three category for our metrics that we can almost taste it, but we're not quite there. As far as some national news of relevance for the COVID situation, you may have heard on the national news about these new variants that are being tracked. There are, we do know that those are present, and they're present in the state of Indiana. We haven't had any reports in Fishers from that new UK variant yet, but there's only a random sampling going on. So it's not 100% of samples that are tested for those new variants. We do suspect that they're about 50% more infectious than what's been circulating to date. So it does pose a fairly significant threat from that point of view. So it is in all of our best interests to get as many people vaccinated as fast as humanly possible. And we are doing our best to do that with the vaccine allocations that we receive. Just a word about our hotline team. We have had our COVID hotline team running this whole time, primarily staffed by our city's customer service team, but also staffed by employees from all over the city and every department. They have been assisting us with making and rescheduling vaccine appointments as well as the testing appointments they've been helping with the whole time, as well as questions generally about COVID and orders and all of those things. They've also been helping us schedule our homebound residents for vaccinations. So we've been able to vaccinate 47 individuals in their homes with the assistance of the hotline team doing that. And we have, I think, a little bit over 12 more scheduled. They've answered more than 10,000 calls since the beginning of this pandemic, which is just astounding to me. And they represent 25 different employees from eight different departments. They also assisted today, along with our contact tracing team, in rescheduling a number of appointments from this afternoon and tomorrow morning due to the snowstorm. So we've gotten all of those vaccine appointments rescheduled for Wednesday, so the very next day. Let's see, as far as our testing goes, we have tested over 40,000 people through our City of Fishers testing site. And that is what we've tested through the Qualtrics partnership or the Quest partnership that we've been having since the end of April, when the Health Department was started. We've also added some additional service through the State Department of Health Labs through a testing grant from the State Department of Health, and that has provided an additional 15,000 tests that we have conducted. So all total, we've done over 55,000 tests for COVID since the end of April, which is just amazing. We have seen a decreased demand in the testing since our high at the beginning of January, where we were testing sometimes 600 a day. But on average, 350 to 400 a day, when you average it out between the six days a week that we're doing testing, we're now dropped down to about 200 a day. So we do see that demand for testing continuing to decrease. And as such, we have temporarily closed down the Technology Drive location because we have plenty of appointments available at the drive-in site. But we can open that backup if we need to, if the demand increases. We are also adding the ability to do rapid testing through the State Department of Health signup link as well. As far as our contact tracing, we continue to do a lot of contact tracing just since January 1st. We have traced 1,975 individuals reported tests from the State Department of Health and an additional 1,435 that we had traced from our testing site. So quite a lot of tracing going on, a lot of calls being made there. We definitely find a lot higher success rate, more than double success rate with completing the investigation and eliciting contacts when we test people immediately following their test results through our testing site because they're not going through that several-day delay that it takes to get reported through the State Department of Health. So we are definitely more successful with that fast turnaround time that we're able to offer with having our own testing site rather than having it come through the State Department of Health first. I'm sure you've all been paying attention to some of the legislative updates and the executive orders that continue from the governor's office. We continue to track our public health orders along with the governor's executive orders so that they are relatively in sync. We just have a few minor differences from the other, from the governor's orders that continue. Nothing new. Those are in place until March 8th currently. As far as vaccines, that's the happiest news we have going on. So we're pretty excited about our vaccines so far. As you guys know, we put out a vaccine interest survey, which was very popular. We had over 32,900 completions of that survey. And that allows us to actively notify individuals on the list when their group becomes eligible. So we were able to make use of that immediately when we received notification that the 65 and up group was cleared for scheduling their vaccine appointments. We got out an email within minutes of that announcement, and our folks were able to get scheduled right away. We're also able to utilize it for our standby vaccine list. So we use that every single day to make sure that we are able to use all those doses and maintain the criteria that the state is expecting that we stick to with the 65 and up criteria. So we're able to utilize that. And in fact, we are actually able to assist some other places around town that do not have an interest or that do not have a standby list. So we've been assisting the Kroger down the road as well when they have extra doses to dole out. We're able to call our folks and let them know about that. As far as vaccines that we've provided so far, we've done 4,386 vaccines so far, and that's been in a month. That includes three different assisted living facilities, so almost 200 folks in those facilities that hadn't yet been identified through the federal partnerships. So we used our EMS partners for that. And then, again, the homebound residents that I mentioned earlier, 47 homebound residents that we have completed, that we have given them their first vaccine in their home using EMS services. So we are really excited about the vaccine clinic. It's a happy place to be. We all want to be there all the time, basically, because it's been a long year, and this is the path forward. So, let's see. So that's where we're at with that. We have 1,000, our allocation right now from the state is 1,000 doses a week, and I don't have any word on that changing, even though they are well aware that our capacity for how many people we could process at our site is much, much higher than that. We're just waiting on those federal supplies to increase. That's all I got.
Thank you for that, Monica. Very much appreciate the update. So we will move forward with the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Still moved.
And that was made by?
Todd.
Sorry, Todd.
Second by Cecilia Kobel.
Thank you, Cecilia. So we have a motion. We have a motion by Todd, a second by Cecilia. All of those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We will move on to the regular agenda. Item number 9021521G, A Request to Approve Financing Agreement for the City's Annual Fleet Loan. Lisa, will you be presenting this?
Yes, I will.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. For the record, Lisa Bradford, City Controller. The item before you is our 2021 fleet loan. As a reminder, when we discuss the 2020 budget, we discuss the purchases that would be included in the 2020 fleet loan. And those are essentially replacements of our current operating fleet. So again, replacement of about 18 police vehicles, a pumper truck for the fire department, and other assorted public works equipment. So the rate for our 2021 fleet loan is 0.83%, which is an amazing rate for the five-year loan. Last year, we were about 1.9%. So the rate is good through the end of the month. So we are asking council to suspend the rules and do first, second, and third reading tonight and pass due to the timing of acceptance on the proposal. Are there any questions?
I have a question, please, Lisa. To actually about, just a little bit more detail about the vehicles that will be purchased. I'm curious, frankly, if any of the new vehicles are hybrids or like fuel economy vehicles?
Um, we have, and Elliot, I know, can jump in a little bit more with this from his discussion with Tabitha Miller, our fleet director. I know in the past, we have looked into fuel-efficient vehicles for the police department. I know some of our fleet, for example, like the PNI vehicles, are starting to be more fuel-efficient. Yep.
This is Scott, and Elliot can correct or go wrong, but I think all of our police cars are now hybrid vehicles per this year.
Okay, I can remember if we switched all of them to hybrid.
Thank you, good to know. And can you provide any more detail about the 18 police vehicles? Like specifically, what are those?
They are, Scott, sorry, do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, they're replacement vehicles. So we have a replacement schedule for our police vehicles, and these are merely a rotation out of vehicles that have reached 130,000, 140,000 miles. We trade them in and get new vehicles. So these aren't additional vehicles unless we've hired a new officer. The rest are just simply replacement patrol vehicles.
Thanks.
Do I have a motion to suspend the rules and approve this ordinance on first reading?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules.
Motion by John?
Second by Cecilia Kobel.
Second by Cecilia. Okay, do we have any other questions by council members or anything regarding the suspension of the rules? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of suspending the rules for ordinance 021521G, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 021521G?
Motion approved.
Motion by John?
Second by Cecilia.
Second by Sam. I'll open it for discussion. Do any council members have any questions? Councilor Zimmerman?
No questions or comments.
Councilor Kobel?
No.
Councilor Vare?
No further questions, thanks.
Councilor Weingart?
No questions or comments, thank you.
Councilor DeLong?
None.
Councilor Peterson?
No, thanks.
Councilor DeRimer?
No questions or comments.
Councilor George?
No questions or comments.
Okay, I'll close for a discussion and call for a vote to approve ordinance 021521G. Clerk, could you take a roll call vote?
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Brad DeRimer?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Did I get everybody?
I think, you didn't get me, Jennifer, I'm an aye.
Cecilia Kobel, sorry.
Aye.
The motion passed. Also, do I have permission to electronically sign everyone's name on all the documents this evening?
Yes.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to item 10R021521C, A Request to Approve a Project Agreement by and between J.C. Hart Company, Gray Eagle Golf LLC, and the City of Fishers, the City of Fishers Redevelopment Commission, and the City and Fishers Economic Development Commission.
Thank you. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic and Community Development for the City of Fishers. Tonight, we have the project agreement and EDA for Gray Eagle Golf Course. As council knows, this is the final reading as well tonight for the PUD for this. And we've seen a lot of the details. I'll really focus my presentation briefly on the terms of the economic development agreement. The economic development agreement before you tonight is a request for a developer-backed TIF bond for this project. That's the only request on the city's behalf. So J.C. Hart, along with the golf course, there's an allowance for either or both of those entities to issue or to receive the proceeds of that bond. But the important thing here is how the proceeds will be separated. So 41% of the TIF proceeds will go to the golf course. In the exhibits portion of the economic development agreement, there's a list of approved costs that the golf course must make to be in compliance with this agreement. The remaining 59% will go to the multifamily component for infrastructure work and construction costs related to their project. The total estimated bond amount is just over $5 million. The other portion of this project is a requirement for the golf course owner to update their clubhouse, but then also to maintain and operate that golf course for at least 15 years. There's a covenant within the project agreement that details information about in the event that they don't continue to maintain their property correctly. And it really has been a very large group effort with the various homeowners associations, the multifamily developer, again, J.C. Hart, city staff, and the golf course owner and operators. With the multifamily project, it's an anticipated investment of $30.7 million with 149 units. There will be lots of amenities within this development. It is going to be an age-targeted community that J.C. Hart will operate and construct. And again, the timing of this, the project would anticipate construction or closing on the construction rather at the end of this year, and then completing construction by December 31st, 2023. The developers and various groups are on the line as well. And Todd and John, anything that you would like to add for our economic development agreement tonight?
This is Todd May with J.C. Hart Company. Just appreciate everyone's efforts to this point, and especially to you, Megan, and the mayor. Thank you.
Thanks, Todd. I'm happy to answer any questions that council might have about our agreement.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve Resolution R021521C?
Motion to approve by Brad.
Do I have a second?
I'll second. I'll second. Go ahead, John.
Okay, Todd's a second. Have Todd have it.
I have a second by Todd. We'll open this for discussion. I'll ask each council member if they have any questions. So we'll start with Councilor DeRimer. Do you have any questions? I don't know if we have Brad with us or not.
He's on mute. He's there. He's just muted.
Okay.
Brad, can you unmute? You can hear us.
We'll circle back. Councilor Peterson, do you have any questions?
No.
Councilor DeLong, do you have any questions?
None.
Councilor Weingart, do you have any questions?
No question, certainly comment. Lot of emails and support from the residents of Gray Eagle and surrounding neighbors for this project. And a great job by, you know, Megan and Scott, Brad. I know Brad DeRimer and former councillor Block. And, you know, a lot of folks did a lot of work. This took a long time. So I think it's a great project. Thank you.
Councilor Vare, do you have any questions?
I do not, but I will echo John's, Councilor Weingart's comments very much. Thank you.
Councilor Kobel, do you have any questions?
I echo the sentiments of John Weingart and Jocelyn Vare about this project. It's great that everyone could come together and work on this. My only quick question, because I've asked it every time, I just want to double-check that we're extending the sidewalk along Brook School Road from the street there that's there, and then the sidewalk extending. along Brook School Road from the street there that's there, and then the sidewalk extending all the way to the end of 126th Street?
Yes, Cecilia, this is Todd May. Yeah, we'll make that improvement all the way up to 126th Street.
Perfect. Thank you.
Councilor Zimmerman, do you have any questions?
No questions or comments.
Okay, we'll try Councilor Dreamer again. Do you have any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to Councilor George. Do you have any questions?
Yeah, just real quick, just the same thing that John said. Just thank you for everybody putting some efforts in. I don't play golf. I've said that before. I'm going to play golf when I'm retired, and I can play golf enough to become good at golf. But I have watched this golf course. Basically, I think they got a little bit behind by not having the full clubhouse, and just over time, it just lessened the number of people there. So I think this is probably a better use than some of the other ones that we've seen, because it maintains the golf course in private hands. It maintains a new clubhouse. It upgrades the golf course, and then it also refurbishes and kind of realigns the driving range, and some of the plans previously did not have that, to create room for this project. And then when I look at the other two, which we've talked about before, we've got River Glen and Ironwood, which are other public courses. They have good clubhouses and things like that. So I think this puts the three public ones in the community on a good, healthy footing. So thank you to everyone who put in efforts on this.
All right, you know, I can't really say any much more than what the other councillors have said. This project is just, you know, to me, it's just warmed my heart, and I think it's been a project to model others after, in that we can, this is how we get neighborhoods to work together. So I'm very grateful for that within our community. I'll close the discussion and call for a vote to approve resolution R021521C, and ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad Dreamer?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Aye.
The motion passed.
Okay, moving on, we are down to item number 10, R021521D, request to approve a resolution adopting the fiscal plan for the Maple Dell subdivision. This is an annexation. We will do 10 and 11 together. Can we, so these two items relate to a voluntary annexation regarding the 18 lots. Chris, we need to vote on these separately. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, that's correct, President Stoller. I think, based on what you guys did last time, if there's no questions from council, you could just hold both agenda items up for a vote.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve R021521D?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by John, second by Pete. Clerk, do we need to have, can we have a vote? Can I have a roll call vote for R021521D?
Yes. Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad Dreamer?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Aye.
The motion passed.
Motion passes. We will move on to 11. Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 011921D, a voluntary annexation of the 18 lots known as the Maple Dell subdivision?
Motion approved.
Motion by Todd?
Second.
Second by Pete. Clerk, can I have a roll call vote on ordinance 011921D?
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad Dreamer?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Selena, Selena, sorry. This is David. Could I just make one quick comment, just on those two, in case anyone from the public is on? This is not, I had a couple of questions on this one, and this is not about the site plan or anything like that. This is just one of the steps. And we've had on the books for a couple of weeks now, the developers meeting with both Charleston Crossing and the townhomes at Fishers Point, which are on the east and the west side of this property, and they've invited me. I think that's this week or next week. So I just want to let, if anyone from the public was listening in about this, this is one of the steps. But some more detailed information on the site plan will be in those future meetings, which are scheduled and about to happen.
Thank you for providing that color for the public. I greatly appreciate it. Moving on to item number 12 and 13, this is much of the same situation here. We will just approve one, and then quickly approve the other one. Okay, so R021521E, a request to approve a resolution adopting the fiscal plan for the U.S. Foods annexation. Do I have a motion to approve R021521E, please?
So moved.
Motion by Pete?
Second.
Second by John. I'll now call for a vote on R021521E, and ask the clerk to take a roll call.
Cecilia Stoller, or I'm sorry, Selena Stoller.
That's okay. I was gonna say, I'm Selena, and I'm aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad Dreamer?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Aye.
Motion passed.
Can I have a motion to approve ordinance 011921A, a voluntary annexation of four lots known as U.S. Foods Expansion?
So moved.
Motion by Pete?
Second by Cecilia.
Second by Cecilia. I will now call for a vote on ordinance 011921A, and ask the clerk to take a roll call vote.
Selena Stoller?
Aye.
David George?
Aye.
Pete Peterson?
Yes.
John Weingart?
Aye.
Cecilia Cobal?
Aye.
Brad Dreamer?
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman?
Aye.
Samantha DeLong?
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, moving along to item number 14, 122120B, consideration of rezone of 1.82 acres from R3 to PUDR. Property is located at 13995 Cumberland Road, and the project known as the Cumberland Cottages. The project will consist of 11 detached units, and this is the final reading. We have with us tonight Jesse Bouchelle to introduce the resolution.
Thank you. Good evening. For the record, Jesse Bouchelle, planning and zoning. The item before you is ordinance number 012120B, Cumberland Cottages. As you said, site is located at 13995 Cumberland Road, which is at the corner of Cumberland Road and 141st Street. The site is approximately 1.82 acres, and the petitioner is seeking to rezone the site from R3 to PUDR. The proposed project consists of 11 detached units that will range from two to three bedrooms, and each unit is spaced 10 feet apart. Units are geared towards single parents, but are open to all that qualify income-wise, and each unit will be around 1,200 square feet and will be one and a half stories. Each unit will also have a covered parking space, and the subject development will be professionally property managed. Architecturally, the cottages will be incorporating front porches to add to the communal feel that will face the central green, that will have access to community gardens. They will also begin incorporating a variety of building materials and modulation to break up the facade plan, and units will also be incorporating natural ventilation and a rain capture system for plantings. So overall, they are creating a sustainable development through the building materials that they will be using. This was, this received unanimous approval for PUD Committee for the architecture back in January. The project will be incorporating a community garden, sustainable stormwater management practices with dry detention and rain garden along Cumberland Road, and will have low-maintenance plantings that are less water-intensive and that require less maintenance to keep the area looking nice, and that will require less maintenance from those that live in the area. We have received many comments regarding this project, both in favor and in opposition. The ones that we've received in opposition have been concerns related to the density of the project with 11 units on less than two acres, safety concerns related to property safety because it's affordable housing project, and potential traffic, the small footprint of each unit, and other concerns been related to property values and traffic concerns. Traffic concerns were a major sticking point and concern from both the public as well as Plan Commission. And as such, we had A&amp;F provide a letter, which was forwarded on to you this morning, to discuss this project. Because it is 11 units, it will not have a major impact on this area, and A&amp;F does not see any, no negative effects will come from this on the roundabout or the surrounding street grid because of the low amount of trips that would be going in and out during the AM peak hours and the evening peak hours. Plan Commission did vote unfavorable against this, eight to one, but staff recommends approval for this project, as this provides a missing product that is needed in the City of Fishers, and it will be a professionally managed development, and will keep the property kept up. Those that have been in favor of the project have made comments saying such as, you know, those that are house burdened due to the high cost of rent, as well as to purchase a home in Fishers, this would be perfect for them. Many have also spoken favor, have said this would be a nice stepping stone for those that want to live in Fishers but can't to live in Fishers while they are working to make an income where they can afford to buy a home. Staff recommends approval, and the petitioner is on the line. Andrea Davis with Hand is on the line.
Will the petitioner be speaking on this?
I would love, I would love to, if that's acceptable. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen, if that's okay. Okay. My name, good evening. For the record, my name is Andrea Davis. I'm a resident of Fishers and Executive Director of Hand Incorporated, a nonprofit community development organization that builds and preserves affordable housing in the suburbs. I'm here this evening to ask you to support our proposal to develop 11 rental cottages that would be accessible to the individuals and families who are spending the majority of their income on housing. Before we get into the specifics of the proposal, let me tell you a little bit about Hand. Hand owns eight rental communities in Hamilton and Boone Counties. We have properties in Carmel, Noblesville, Cicero, Sheridan, and Lebanon, and we're finalizing plans to build five units of senior housing in Tipton. Most of our properties are small, intentionally small, 11 units or less, and they are designed to fit into the neighborhoods where they're located. At Hand, we know that where we live impacts every aspect of our lives. Our homes are the foundation for our health, education, safety, and economic well-being. Hand helps the working poor build a strong foundation for their future. Because I know there have been concerns about how Hand's properties are maintained, I drove around Friday afternoon taking some updated photos. This property, Plum Tree Gardens in Noblesville, is one of our oldest, opening in 2010. The weather didn't really allow you to see the landscaping and that sort of thing, but you can get an idea of how the property is kept. This is Pebblebrook Gardens, nine units of senior housing located in the Pebblebrook Golf Course community in Noblesville. As you might imagine, there was lots of opposition when this was proposed, but once it was built, those same neighbors wanted to know how to get an apartment for their parents. In 2019, Hand had our annual celebration, open house, at this property. Those who toured the units were amazed at the quality, and the neighbors who stopped to ask what all the hoopla was about had no idea that this was an affordable property. This property, Home Place Gardens in Carmel, won Lisk Indianapolis's Love Thy Neighborhood Award in the vitality category in 2019. It is our most recent development, and the first that has included detached homes for families, similar to what we are proposing in Fishers. Residents of these three-bedroom rental homes must be referred by prevail. 12 Stars Media produced an eight-minute video for Hand last year that explains why affordable housing is needed in every community. I won't test your patience by asking you to watch the whole video, but I would like you to meet someone. This is A.M. Sanders, a single mother who lives at Home Place Gardens and is an example of why we do what we do. Well, maybe you'll see it, and maybe you won't. Okay, we'll move on. There's a video. It's very touching. This is a woman who was in an abusive relationship. She has children. She was trying to figure out how to make do with single income after her marriage ended, and found that because of some of the financial abuse she endured, she was unable to qualify for rental housing elsewhere, and she couldn't afford much on a single, single income. She was 24 hours away from taking her family to a shelter when she received permission to move into Home Place Gardens. After about six months of stable housing, she was able to complete her coursework in the evenings and received her PhD. This is just one example of why we do what we do. The first few communities Hand built were designed and reserved for seniors 55 and older. We also rescued three historic commercial buildings in downtown Noblesville, now home to 14 one-bedroom apartments. And in 2018, we built the two three-bedroom homes for families at Home Place Gardens. Our focus now is on workforce housing, something for folks in the service and retail industries who aren't in a position to buy a home here yet, and who can't afford to pay market rate rent. The United Way's most recent ALIS report estimates that a family of four living in Hamilton County needs to earn more than $80,000 a year just to afford the basics. Our housing costs are one of the reasons one of the state's most affluent counties is also home to more than three dozen food pantries. The demand for workforce housing is growing because of a disconnect between housing costs and income. 48% of Hamilton County's workforce is employed in the seven lowest wage industries, many of which also happen to be among the fastest-growing. Almost three-quarters of those working in Hamilton County are burdened by the cost of living here. Hand is a state-designated community housing development organization, which means we have access to federal housing programs administered by the state. Funding applications are accepted once a year, and the most promising proposals are awarded grants and often low-interest loans to help pay for construction. In return, the developer, in this case Hand, agrees to keep the property affordable for a period of time, typically 15 to 20 years. Before we apply, we need to have control of the proposed site and the zoning in place to allow the proposed development. That's why we're here now. If our rezoning is approved, the next step is putting together more detailed plans that include construction cost estimates as well as income and expense projections for the entire 20-year affordability period. Once that is in place, we can refine the architecture and other details. This is also when we reach out to local service providers and potential referral partners This is also when we reach out to local service providers and potential referral partners to ensure our housing is available to those who need it the most. And that they have easy access to whatever services they might require. In Fishers, we have had preliminary conversations with Fishers Youth Assistance, the Youth Mentoring Initiative, Delaware Township Trustees Office, and the Good Samaritan Network. After submitting our application, we wait about three months for a decision and then another ninety days or so for a federal environmental review before the funding is released and construction can begin. Once the property is built, the state continues to monitor its performance throughout the affordability period. All of Hand's properties are self-sustaining, which means the rents are used to pay for ongoing maintenance, any needed repairs or replacements, as well as professional property management services. Hand's long-term plan is to retain ownership of our properties so they remain affordable in perpetuity. I know homeownership is a priority, priority for Council President Stoller and others. So we're willing to explore the possibility of converting Cumberland Cottage to a homeownership model at the end of its affordability period. It's just not something we can commit to today. The economic disruptions called but caused by COVID-nineteen have made it clear how many of our neighbors are living close to the edge. Hand has provided more than three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in rental, mortgage, or utility assistance to Hamilton, Hamilton and Boone County residents since August. And over thirty-eight thousand dollars of that total went to twenty-two households in need in Fishers. In the past eighteen months, Family Promise of Hamilton County, which provides emergency shelter for families, received a total of twenty-seven crisis calls from Delaware and Fall Creek Townships. Family Promise was able to provide temporary housing and other services for three of those families. And I know from speaking with their executive director that their biggest challenge when a family graduates from their program is finding permanent housing that's affordable. Allison Gatz, the most recent Executive Director of Youth Mentoring Initiative Initiative in Fishers, estimated that fifty to seventy-five of the families YMI works with now would qualify for housing, the housing Hand is proposing. That's fifty to seventy-five families already living in Fishers who need a more affordable housing option. And if our proposal is approved, eleven of them could get some relief. We firmly believe that Fishers needs more affordable options like Cumberland Cottages. This would be our first property in Fishers and our first designed specifically for working families. Hand has agreed to purchase almost two acres of mostly vacant land at the southwest corner of Cumberland Road and a hundred and forty-first Street, where we'd like to build eleven detached two- and three-bedroom cottages clustered around shared green space to build a stronger sense of community. The south side of the site is adjacent to just four single-family homes, two of which are not occupied by their owner. This land, previously home to a farmhouse, has been for sale off and on for years. As I mentioned, we're still fine-tuning the architectural and interior design of the units, but these renderings show the basic concept on the drawing board. We plan to have porches, um, sustainable features like Jesse mentioned, and yes, carports. I've heard some concerns about our proposal to build carports rather than garages. So I'd like to address that. First, I hope you know that Cumberland Cottages would not be the only property in the area with carports. The Woods of Britain, an apartment complex located half a mile west off of a hundred and forty-first Street, has both standalone carports and garages as well as surface parking. Our architects have designed a carport that is attached to the home. As maybe you can see here, you're fancy. So there's one wall that essentially screens the parking area from view. And although I understand that neighbors are worried about having to look at whatever might be stored outside, I can assure you that we'll make our expectations clear to all of our residents. And I should mention that when I drove the area this weekend to confirm that other properties had carports, I noticed a single-family home in the neighborhood to the south that had two bicycles in the yard, a snow shovel, salt on the porch, and two trash and recycling toders in the driveway. I would have taken a picture to show you, but the property owner asked me not to. The bottom line, though, is having a garage doesn't necessarily mean it will be used. Contrary to one of the most persistent misperceptions about affordable housing, it does not, and I will repeat, does not lower the value of surrounding properties. In fact, several national studies have shown that attractively designed, well-maintained affordable properties have positive impacts on neighborhoods. Hand reviewed the assessed values of the sixty residential properties adjacent to one of our affordable communities in Hamilton County. From two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and twenty, the assessed values of those properties increased across the board, ranging from an average gain of eighteen percent near Plum Tree Gardens in Noblesville to more than sixty-five percent near Lakeside Guard Gardens in Cicero. Our Carmel property, Home Place Gardens, is not on this chart because it didn't open until two thousand and eighteen. But the assessed values of adjacent properties there increased an average of seven-point-seven percent in just one year, from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty. Another set of myths relates to who lives in affordable housing. I won't repeat them since they're rooted in stereotypes rather than reality. But I can tell you that we typically serve residents who already live or work nearby and simply pay too much for housing. All of our residents much, must demonstrate that they have enough income to pay the rent, that they don't make more than sixty percent of area median income. About thirty-nine thousand dollars per year for a two-person household were about a four. That's are subjected to a rigorous process that is criminal background and credit checks as well as annual income verification. Tenants must have income and show us where it originates. The rents will be determined once we have a better idea of construction costs and the amount of funding we have available for the project. But they will likely range from about six hundred fifty to eleven hundred fifty dollars a month. The U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development sets rent limits each year, and we abide by those. We are here this evening, obviously, because Hand is seeking to rezone the property to allow for additional units per acre. This slide provides a snapshot of the density of the surrounding area. As you can see, properties to the north and west have significant density already. Here, we zoom in on those properties for a little more detail. These three images are all exactly the same size and scale. There's no optical illusion going on here. As you can see, Cumberland Cottages would be much less dense at eleven units on this size property than our multifamily neighbors. And this what, is what it looks like when the eleven cottages are overlaid on top of that empty lot. And you can see what, what our proposal looks like in context with our neighbors. At Plan Commission, we heard concerns about traffic safety, as Jesse mentioned, given the property's location near a roundabout. But the traffic projections from A and F, which is the city's traffic engineering consultant, would predict that the traffic would account for less than one-half of one percent of the daily traffic on that, at that intersection. We had a preliminary discussion with the engineering department back in November and agreed, after, after they reviewed our plans, they suggested we revise our initial plans to, to for site access rather than right in and right out as we had originally planned. They suggested we consider full access to the site from a hundred and forty-first Street and limiting the Cumberland Road entrance to emergency access only. That's something that A and F Engineering said would allow the development to function safely and efficiently. We are committed to finding an acceptable resolution to the site access questions. And as my understanding, my understanding is that typically happens during the next step in the process. The speed limit here already drops to fifteen miles an hour as drivers approach the roundabout, almost exactly where the entrances to our development would be. Hand also consulted with a traffic engineer who provided similar estimates along with some important context. An office use on this site would generate about five times as many trips as our eleven homes. And a retail use would generate nearly twenty times as many trips. Several, several members of the Plan Commission said they don't oppose the community, the Cumberland Cottage concept, just the location. But as anyone who does what I do can tell you, it's not as simple as picking another site. Hand has been looking for property in Fishers for well over a year, and this map shows why we have found the perfect location. I realize it's hard to read, but allow me to summarize. The site we have chosen is within three miles, that's the circle you see here, of pretty much everything residents could possibly need. Schools, healthcare, groceries, banks, recreation and entertainment, social services, and the biggie, jobs. The pushback you have heard from residents, especially those who don't live anywhere near Cumberland Cottages, has a name, NIMBY. Not in my backyard. The reality is, any site we choose has neighbors that more than likely will oppose it. And anywhere that doesn't have neighbors isn't close to the amenities we need. Neighbors are worried that property, that our property won't be properly maintained. But Hand prides itself on building and maintaining quality affordable housing. So what does that mean? We use building materials and appliances that are energy efficient and as a result, cost-effective for residents. We utilize universal design principles to ensure our housing is accessible to all. Exterior materials are durable and easy to maintain. And our prof, and professionals maintain our properties. We contract with a third-party property manager, Bradley Company out of South Bend, who handles all of the day-to-day operations as well as property maintenance. The bottom line for us is, if it's not a place we would live, it's not a place we would expect others to move into or live next door to. It's also worth noting that we're not absentee landlords. Hand is active in the communities where we have properties, so any potential problems can be addressed quickly. It seems relevant to mention here that of the fifty letters we sent to adjoining property owners to let them know about the Plan Commission hearing, fourteen went to addresses outside Fishers or Noblesville. That's twenty-eight percent of neighbor, neighboring properties that are not owner-occupied. In contrast, I live almost exactly three miles away, and I can assure you, this is already on, on my way to work. We want to be a good neighbor, and I think our current neighbors would tell you that we live up to that aspiration. That's why we hosted two public input sessions, one in person and one in, online in December, to open the lines of communication with our closest neighbors. The feedback we received at the time was generally positive. I know some of you have heard otherwise, so I'd like to address some of those concerns as well. The city's provided Hand with copies of the public comments submitted in connection with our rezone request. I've read every one of them, and I've attempted to address their, all of the concerns in this presentation. If I missed any of what you've heard or your own personal concerns, I hope you'll ask me about them. Based on the reaction our proposed, our proposal received from Plan Commission, you might think that no one thinks it's a good idea. But that's not the case. Of the ten comments submitted to be read at Plan Commission, six were in favor of the rezone and four were against it. I believe the comments submitted online were included in the council packet tonight. But I've also been copying on a total of thirteen emails sent directly to council members and the mayor. And all of them are supportive of Hand and/or the Cumberland Cottages proposal. Nothing about building affordable housing is easy, from my point of view and yours. I get that. I understand that there's still lots of people in Fishers and beyond who do not understand how our community benefits from having a wide range of housing options that can accommodate residents throughout the different stages of their lives. Unfortunately, the opponents tend to have louder voices than the growing group of advocates who get it. All I'm asking you to do tonight is to review the points made by both sides, consider the evidence in front of you, and make a decision that is baked, based on facts, not fear. Hand is committed to helping Fishers meet the housing needs of its most vulnerable residents, if you let us. I appreciate your time and attention this evening, and I would be happy to engage in conversation to address any questions you still might have. Now we just have to figure out how to unshare.
Thank you for that, Andrea.
You're welcome.
Do I have a motion for ordinance one-two, two-one, two-zero B?
Brad, next.
I could not hear who that was talking, I'm sorry.
It was Brad.
Okay, and Brad, did you make a motion to approve?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to approve by Brad, do we have a second?
Jocelyn will second.
Okay, Jocelyn will second, a second by Jocelyn. I'm going to open it up for general discussion. But before that, I'm going to turn it over to Councilor Peterson for a summary of how the Plan Commission analyzed this project.
I, I have no additional comments other than Jesse Bouchelle did an excellent job stating exactly what happened at Planning Commission. So I have no further comments on Planning Commission items.
Okay, so I'll open it up for discussion. Councilor Zimmerman, do you have any comments?
I have no comments or questions right now.
Thank you. Councilor Cobal, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, I appreciate Andrea and the city just circling back on some of these concerns and addressing some of the concerns and questions that uh were out there in the Planning Commission in terms of, of traffic and ingress and egress and density, and so I appreciate that. I think, I think what you have provided brings more clarity to those concerns. There was some questions too about buffering, Andrea. I know, I just wanted to, to understand the buffering and then I think just um overall upkeep in terms of of the community. And my understanding is that, you know, the residents there will have to it um abide by, you know, certain living rules of the community, you know, making sure that uh, you know, trash is maintained. Their areas maintained, can you just address those, those two things?
Sure, yes, thanks for the question. Obviously, we will provide all of the, the buffering that the, that's required when you have different property uses abutting one another. Again, these are details that will come into better focus once we um have the results, results of the survey back and can figure out exactly where the stormwater uh management will be. But our plan is to use a combination of earth and mounds and um greenery, like uh trees and shrubs and that sort of thing that would provide, you know, kind of a, screen the, the site from the view of our neighbors to the south and the, um, the west. Obviously, on the north side of the site, that's a, a major intersection. And so that, you know, where that intersection is, I'm sure won't have quite the screening that, that the other parts of, of the site do. But that's definitely a consideration and, and we will do all that we can on that. And your point about, you know, kind of the covenants of the, the surrounding areas, we, we absolutely have expectations of our residents in terms of how, how our properties look um from the to others as they drive by. I mean, you know, as, as, as we all know, um, it's difficult. Any affordable housing is under a lot of scrutiny in Hamilton County. And so we take great pains to ensure that that's not a reason that someone can, can point to a hand property and say, see, I told you, we didn't want this. We know what's at stake, and we try very hard to, you know, to, to do the, to do everything we can to, to ensure we are not a, a problem in, in any neighborhood. One of the, the Neighborhood Association to the West, the country fields at Fishers, had expressed some concerns about that. We are happy to sit down with them and review their covenants and make sure that we're holding our residents to similar standards. You know, we, we, like I said, we don't want to be the eyesore on the walk. Um, and that's something, you know, obviously, we would sit down and do after the rezone and kind of during the the further development of, of our plans. But we are certainly open to doing that, and um, we look forward to, to having our neighbors change their minds about us like they did in Pebblebrook and Noblesville.
Thank you, Andrea. I, I appreciate you addressing the concerns that were brought up in, in emails and, and concerns that the Plan Commission had. As you know, and many of you know, I, I am a strong advocate for accessible and affordable housing for the disability community. I've, I've spent uh quite a bit of time the last year or two learning more about affordable housing and, and how it's being affected here in Hamilton County and Fishers. I've learned more about Hand as an organization. They are a very reputable organization. They have a success rate, a track record. They're there to help, they want to help the people in our community. And we all know people that have been uh faced with circumstances that, that put them in a, in a place where they might need temporary affordable housing to get, get going and, and to get back on track. And um, I, I'm going to be supportive of, of this project this evening, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilor Vayer, do you have any comments or questions?
I do. First, thank you, Andrea, for your thoughtful proposal and your presentation that was very thorough. thorough and helpful. I feel that HAND has made it as smooth as possible for this body to approve new affordable housing in our city. HAND is a local nonprofit, they're experts in affordable housing, and they have a proven track record of successful, attractive communities in Hamilton County. They are taking on this community need without a desire to make a dime. And each member of this body has approved, myself included, has approved apartment projects in our city that were far more dense, far more units, and far more impact on traffic. And approved apartment projects created by developers that may not have been motivated to fill a community need, but to make a profit. So I do respect the Fishers residents who have voiced their concerns about property values and traffic and density, but those concerns, as Andrea shared, are not supported by facts. As members of the City Council, we must learn, listen to these residents' concerns, but we must also be leaders, and that must mean making decisions based on facts alone. So tonight, let us demonstrate this leadership and firmly state to all that Cumberland Cottage will be an asset that our community can be proud of. So I feel like this is no time for double standard or excuses, this is time for confidence in a community partner who is offering to serve us. This is a time to retain or welcome 11 households to our city, who may not otherwise have the chance to do so. So, thank you.
Councilor Weingart, do you have any questions or comments?
Yes, this is a tough one for me. I'm, I'm in favor of, I just don't like the location. I don't like that corner there, I've driven it, I've driven by it, I just, you know, with the type of housing that's going there, which I would imagine when you have children, getting school buses in there, that's my concern, but I like the project. I, I think we need to look at, you know, we, we need to help Andrea finding another, another location for this. And, you know, I've had a number of folks email me, and I can't say I've got emails, you know, more in favor or not in favor. It's been about 50/50 depending on when it's, but I tried to keep track of that. I even had elect, other elected fish, to reach out to me, some in favor, some not in favor, and I'm not going to mention any names, or anything like that tonight, because I, I want to keep that, that private. Some people look at, you know, do, you know, is there affordable housing here in Fishers? Do we have that? And, and in fact, we do, we do have some of it, and, and, and I actually drove by, not only what Andrea, what you have, and, and Home Place, which is a, it's a nice, nice community, but I also drove by, back in Fishers, there's 250 units at Cumberland Crossing. You know, we, we voted as a council in 2019 to add 100 units at South Point Village down on Lander Road, and we've also are adding another 32 units of income-based housing for seniors. So right now, you know, we're, we're close to 382 units now, is that enough? I, probably not. But I'm, I'm still struggling with this location, it just really concerns me, and I guess part of it is, I see how people drive through it, even though it may look like, from the A&amp;S traffic report, I mean, my son had a car accident there, just because a bunch of people were speeding through that roundabout. My concern's more from a safety perspective, if we're going to have children hopping on school buses, how do you make that work in a roundabout? I'm just, I'm just concerned about that. I think on a, on a, on a broader approach, you know, we have a comprehensive plan that we're embarking on, and I think we need to reach out to our residents and say, is affordable housing something that is meaningful to us? Do we want, do, do our residents want to do this commuting? And Andrea, you're absolutely right, it's, you know, people say, not in my backyard, but we need to find a way to say, how can we have in our backyard it being something that's meaningful? So, you know, from that perspective, that, that's what I'm seeing with this project. I, I like your vision, I like the project, I just, you know, I, I, I can't get over the hurdle of that location, quite honestly. You know, it's a, you know, our community is, is, you know, supposed to, you know, we say we're smart, vibrant, and entrepreneurial, I, I really think we, I always say we're family-friendly and hardworking. I think there's a place for affordable housing in our community, there is, there is a, a place where we can do this and do it well, and we need to think about this as a council for a comprehensive plan, also reaching out to our residents and see what we can do to make this happen, but I, I'm going to vote no, not because I don't like the, I just don't like the location.
And that's fair. Could I, Councilor Stoller, would it be okay for me to respond to a couple of the points Ms. Councilor Weingart raised? Particularly about the, the 32 units of senior housing, I assume you're referring to the One America, I'm sorry, Real America, project that was kind of in tandem with the, I, I actually reached out to Real America last week to inquire about the, that, and Jeff Ryan, their Director of Development, told me they have not made any decisions about the second building out there, the first building that's under construction is market rate, and they have not made a definitive, uh, decision yet about the other two. I know Rhonda Waybright, from the, the founder of Real America, which is a for-profit development firm that's developing South Point Villas that you also, South Point Village, which you also referred to, says they have more people on their waiting list than units that will be available. In 2018, HAND did a housing needs assessment for all of Hamilton County and found that the county as a whole, this was in 2018, so three years ago, needed more than 3,700 new rental units that were affordable. At the same time, they determined if the existing rental units were allocated on a per capita base, in, in the whole county, were allocate, were reallocated based on a per capita, so every community got the same amount based on their population that Fishers would be, would get 134 more units, and that obviously was before the South Point Village was proposed. But next year is 2022, and we have, and we haven't added any since 2018, so.
Okay, and move along to Councilor DeLong.
Okay.
Councilor DeLong, do you have questions or comments?
Yeah, I just want to say thank you for this presentation, it was very thorough, very informative, I will be voting in favor, I believe it's something that Fishers needs, as I've been told by a lot of my constituents when I was out campaigning a couple years ago. But yes, I will be voting in favor, thank you.
Councilor Darimer, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, a few. One on the density thing, Andrea did a good job showing her two-acre plot with 11 units, and then the condos being in the twenties or forties. I did the same thing for that subdivision to the south, which is single-family. The average lots in there are .17 per acre, which gives you a density of 5.88, rounded up to six per unit, per 11 on 1.82 is six per unit, so the density for the single-family housing to the south. A&amp;F Engineering has told us that it's not going to be a traffic problem there. One of the mayor's mottos for Fishers is, work in Fishers, live in Fishers, play in Fishers. Over 40% of our own city employees cannot afford to live in Fishers. At my age, we go out to eat a lot, and before COVID, I was allowed, because I've owned some restaurants in the past, got to know a lot of the general managers and a lot of the waiters and waitresses in all the restaurants up at Hamilton Town Center. And when I told them about this, I called Andrea and I said, I got the 11 gone, just almost from one restaurant. Most of the people that work up there live in Anderson, can't afford to live in Fishers. There is a tremendous, tremendous, tremendous need for affordable housing, so you can work here, live here, and play here. And this is a project that's needed, and we need many, many more of these projects. And thank you Andrea for bringing it. The only problem Andrea, I have, I noticed in the background, you have an IU flag there, and being a Purdue graduate, I'll still vote for it.
Councilor Peterson, do you have any questions or comments?
No, I, I appreciate everybody's comments and questions today, and I understand the passion about this particular project going on, and I think it's certainly a much larger, you know, concept that we need to sit here and digest, and, and really make a, an impact. You know, one of the things that the mayor talks about frequently in his messaging, is we want to be impactful on the community, right? And we've taken the first step with it, with a couple of those for-profit enterprises, to see if that's going to move the needle. And nothing hands hand and, and the rest of the, because I think it's a good group, and I think it's a project that, that certainly has merit to helping those that are, that are in need there. I will tell you that from a public outreach standpoint, you know, calling up 15 or 16 people, having them send emails, and then the phone calls and the emails that I receive directly that aren't just copy and paste type of stuff, also speaks volumes. So you have to put yourself in our position to say, I need to go ahead and answer to my constituents, and yes, I think there's a lot of that not in my backyard going on. And I, I took a bunch of holy hell the last time we voted on the other things that went on there, trust me, right? So we're trying to overcome this situation, which is a difficult situation to, to have for any community, right? I just don't think we hit the mark yet, I just don't. I, I think we're missing it in a number of ways. You know, where is the tax base coming from? Who's paying taxes on these properties? You know, for the for-profit ones, I get that too. Again, there's a number of issues that I've talked directly about to Andrea's board members, and I've had four or five conversations with people this week about this topic, and I, I just don't think that this is going to move the needle enough in this area, and I think there's a backlash that's going to come from the residents unless we do it right. So let's sit down with, with HAND, let's sit down with the other folks that are there, really have a substantive conversation on how we address this problem citywide, so I will be voting no on this item, thanks.
Councilor George, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a few. Thank you for the time. I actually talked to Andrea last week, and, and some of it's on the website, but I did before the snow. I drove around over the weekend to Noblesville, just the ones downtown, I know that they've got a couple of others, Home Place, then I went out to Sheridan yesterday. Part of what I wanted to look at was the ones that were not brand-new, but the ones that were older, so that you can see how, how they're maintained, and they, obviously with some snow, so I'm petting the dog. There was some snow, but everything looked to be in, in place and things like that, so that was good to see. And I had three different kind of questions for three different people. One was maybe for Jesse. When it says third reading, my understanding was this is second reading, am I mistaken in that? Because I know that we had the first reading, and then went to Plan Commission, and typically it would come back a second reading.
So this is third and final reading, this is when you adopt? So this is third and final reading when you, this is third and final reading when you adopt? Second reading was at Plan Commission for public hearing, first reading was back in December, for when we introduced the project to you, so this will be third and final reading when you make a decision.
Okay, so I've typically thought second reading is when we come back to the council for that portion.
This is the second reading by, this is the second reading by council, David, just to clarify, it is kind of confusing, but there's three different meanings.
Okay. Well, independent of that, the, the main things that I just wanted to touch on, I, I brought up garages before, and I just want to bring those up again. I think it's important to have an enclosed garage, I know that Woods of Britain maybe doesn't, but that was built in the 1990s. As you go forward and things, you just, you want to have more and more. So when you look at the condos to the west, I'm trying to find a site, so that when this is done and built, neighbors that are next door, or just people driving along 141st Street will look over and say, oh, there's just something over there. And, and I think that garages will help over the test of time, so I wondered about that. Also, on your packet, you had mentioned shiplath accent siding, and some other types of siding, and then in your presentation, I think it answered it, but I just want to make sure, but it looks like you typically use fiber cement siding, is that what you would be proposing?
Yes, again, we'll work out the final details once we have better construction cost estimates, so that's where we make decisions like, you know, can we do some, some stone or masonry? Can we do garages? So it's entirely, it's possible, but it's not guaranteed that if the, if the construction costs come in where we would like them to come in, and the funding comes in where we would like it to come in, that we could upgrade, upgrade carports to garages. But for the purposes of the PUD, since we have to have the, the rezone in place before we can even apply, we decide, we opted to present this at, you know, kind of the bare minimums. My understanding from talking with Jesse is, we could always upgrade, we just can't downgrade. So, you know, maybe when we crunch the numbers, we decide, you know, with the professionals' construction manager, once we do that, maybe we decide, hey, let's only do 10 units and use, you know, that, that wiggle room in the budget to upgrade to garages. And we just have to make sure the project will generate enough revenue to continue to sustain itself in the future. So it would be my dream to be able to, to offer garages. I actually, HAND applied to the Fishers nonprofit grant last year in hopes of getting some funding to fund some of the upgrades that I suspected would be requested in a community like Fishers. We weren't successful, but we'll continue to do fundraising to figure out how to make that a possibility.
David, is it okay if I say something real quick? Is that okay with you? I, I just, th- these are things like, and Andrea, you do a fantastic, fantastic job. And that, this is where I would agree with what Pete was saying a little bit about, if we can find a way, like, to, these are things that Dave are pointing out and stuff, that a grander vision, so we know those things, because I, I'm hearing some things now from you, it's like, you know, there, there could be upgrades, and, and you're, it's not, what you're not doing, so don't hear me wrong, it's, it's the process, and I feel like the process is broken in the sense of, okay, A has to be done, and B has to be done, then you find out, right? Then you find out what, what can be the true product, and my, as my concern was voiced about, you know, egress and, and safety concerns, that was my main issue, not really knowing yet exactly, can there be a, a left turn in and a, and a right turn in, right? Not knowing those things is where I'm, I've had my challenge, so I don't want to go back, I don't want to take away from David, but what he's saying, and some of the things that I think you're finding, some of the resistance on, some of the council members, has nothing to do with HAND, has nothing to do with the mission and the vision, it has to do with not knowing some of the things, and with other projects, it's hard to compare apples to oranges, right? Because other those, we, there's the defined scope, there's, there's, you know, we, we look through those processes and see all the different things that are part of those structures, and so that, you know, I didn't say anything at first, I honestly, I wanted to hear everybody else's, because I know there was a lot of questions out there, and I haven't been able to talk to a lot of council members, just to kind of even see, hey, you know, what are you, what are you sensing, and what are your resistance, or what are you for? So hearing all this, I just want to reemphasize, even on my end, this is not, this is not a negative for you, and, and for HAND, this is like, how can we holistically find that, find that partnership? You know, and I can't speak for the mayor's office, I'm just one council member, but how can we partner in this? So David, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yep, that's fine. And Andrea, I think you mentioned it, but is that, are you saying that the siding material would not be known at this point either?
Yeah, we, we typically use fiber cement board, we, we then, we sometimes, and actually in all of our other projects, we also use some sort of brick or masonry, where you, working with a different architect this, this time, and my understanding from him is, what he has described is more about the, the pattern or the design of the siding than the materials. It is, if it's not fiber cement board, it's a very similar, durable, long-lasting material. I think he is on the call, if, if we want to clarify that, but.
Yeah, I'm just trying to ask, so I can get, yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense, just for the, the neighbors, as they ask to be able to answer. And, and the reason I'm bringing this up is, I'm having meetings later this week on Mapledale, which is west of Wild Ginger, and what happened was, there were a lot of meetings before, and then it was voted on, and now it's a situation where they're still trying to work through the fine-tuning details, but there's, a lot of the neighbors feel like, hey, it was already voted on, and, and it's just harder to go through that, where almost you should get those details in place, it would just help those neighbors, and I have two separate neighborhood meetings that are coming up for that purpose, that's why I'm trying to ask now about these things, I'd rather have them in place now before later.
I see David Roush, our, our architect, just popped on, he can perhaps address this.
Sure, thank you, thank you councilors, can you hear me? Since I've been sitting quiet for an hour. Thank you for, for your comments, David, just a, a couple things on the, the siding, the accent material that we proposed is actually, it's a, it's called ASIC, but it's a wood, a wood-type product, but it's, it's maintenance-free, it's actually probably as or more expensive than masonry, and it's a, it's a long-term material, it doesn't require painting, and it doesn't move, water-resistant and so forth, so HAND, actually, we talked about masonry, and if we were to use that in its place, it would be, you know, from our standpoint, quality and, and materially, you know, in insignificant. And materially, you know, in insignificant, uh, the product that we're using is actually possibly even slightly more expensive than. Then the, uh, then like, like brick, um, the other comment I'd make about the carports and the garages is that. The site plan very deliberately, um. Suggests pretty, pretty aggressive mounding on both the north and the south sides of the property. Uh, the south side obviously butts a single family residential, uh, development. There's the. UDO would actually require zoning or would actually require, uh, mounding and/or a heavy landscape screen there anyway. Uh, we've also chosen to do the same thing on the north side, although it's not necessarily required. So the, with the goal that when somebody drives by. Uh, not so much to, to try to hide the property, but to, you know, put a nice, long. Layer landscaping in front of it. And we have the benefit of a deep, uh, right away. You know, on one hundred and forty-first street. So the tennis courts, as an example. To the west are very heavily screened and we see the opportunity to extend that. So. We think the, the visibility into the, into the carports, um, at this point. With both the landscape screening and also the, the heavy sidewall was very intentional to try to downplay that.
Thanks, David.
Okay. Well, thanks. Good seeing you. They haven't worked with you for a number of years.
I know likewise.
Yeah.
We'll have to stop meeting like this.
I was coming back with this really, I just, I'm just trying to fine tune and just kind of detail the siding materials, not whatever it is. I just want to try to fine tune it. Cause when I look at the packet, um, it was just a little bit silent. So that's why I wanted to bring that up. And then the garages, it wasn't as butts that somebody would see it. It was more for the resident in the future. Other residents have garages. These residents should have that too. I guess that's kind of where I'm coming at it. Um, so I guess I'll pass the mic now, um, to whoever's next. But then I also wanted to mention, it sounded like, um, Scott Fadness was on too. I don't know, he might be out plowing roads. If he wanted to weigh in, um, on any, uh, on any of the topics, I'm wanting to give him the opportunity as well.
Thanks, David. Uh, I'm not out there yet, but I will be shortly depending upon the length of this meeting, but, uh. I appreciate it. I, as a Indy Star said the other day, um. You know, they asked me my opinion before the council members had the opportunity to weigh in. And I would tell you the same thing. I respect the process and respect the land use decisions. Or ultimately your guys' decision. I will say that I think hand as an organization, credible. Um, very much so. I think Andrea and her team. Probably has progressed and evolved and gotten stronger at their ability to answer. Questions that our residents and city council members have had. And, uh, and I think that's also, um, a good thing because I think from plant commission to where we got tonight. I think there's a lot more information, a lot more facts out there for the council members. David, to your point a second ago, um, I do think the council member should be aware, and I'm, I'm by no means advocating for this, but. David is correct that for years, it was first reading. Plant commission, second reading and third reading. Uh, that, so I, David, you are correct in that, that was the way we did it for a number of years. So I think to your point about advocating to clarify any issues or anything like that from a timing perspective. That, that was the way that we approached things. So I do want to clarify that. But, um, I, I think there is merit to every statement that's been made on both the pro and con side of this conversation tonight.
I just want to say that I really agree with Counselor Peterman Peterson, that we need to. Look at this from a community, embrace it, decide and embrace the discussion as to how we want to move forward. As I've stated in the past, I'm not quite comfortable with the project yet. Um, and with that, I will ask the, uh, call for a vote. To, there was a motion to approve, so we'll call for a vote to approve ordinance one, two, two, one, two, zero B. And I'll ask the clerk to take a roll call.
Selena Stoller.
Nay.
David George.
Hi, please get the garages in.
Pete Peterson.
No.
John Weingart.
Nay.
Cecilia Kobel.
Aye.
Brad DeRimer.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Nay.
Samantha Delong.
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare.
Aye.
There's five yays. And four nays. The motion passed.
And Andrea, Andrea, what I, I want to say congratulations. I, I would ask, could we please talk about the safety issues?
Yes.
I, I, I really want this to succeed and I want this to be a safe project. So you have my support. You have my support in that if we can fix this. Okay?
Thank you so much. Thank you all very much.
And likewise Andrea, my, you have, I mean, congratulations and we're here to help you.
Definitely. I'll be in touch. Thank you.
Look forward to that as always.
Okay, moving on to zero, one, one, nine, two, one, B. A consideration of a text amendment to the Parkside PUD to amend the parking requirements. And minimum unit square footage as part of an approved senior apartment project. We have Jesse Beauchelle to introduce the resolution.
For the record, Jesse Beauchelle with Planning and Zoning. Uh, Council President Stoller, uh, the petitioner reached out today and would like for you all to send this back. To Plan Commission. Um, they found a discrepancy when they were doing their fine tuning. Getting ready for the meeting tonight, um, that they had made. In the ordinance and they want to go back before Plan Commission so that that is, uh, cleaned up. And so that it is, um, you know, has the public have, the public has a chance to speak on it. So. And he, Tim Stevens with Man Properties is on the line. And he can further elaborate on that.
Okay.
Well, if they're going to take it back to planning commission, we should be fine letting it go there and then come back, shouldn't we? This is Pete, by the way.
Uh, Chris, how do we handle that situation?
Could you guys repeat the comment? You guys cut out for a minute.
Yeah, Chris, this is Pete. So again, I apologize. I'm getting very sporadic service as well over here. So. I'm hearing not everything, but you know, they're, they're making a request to go back to planning commission. You know, there's any reason for us to comment on a parking issue now and let them change it and then bring it back. And we're going to see it last. So I say we just let them take it to planning.
Yeah, you could certainly send it back to the planning commission. It's up for a vote tonight. If somebody wants to make a motion to have the vote. If it feels like you guys want to send it back for, for the revision, then you certainly have that authority to do that as well.
Okay. So do we need to vote to send it back to Plan Commission?
I would ask that you do that with that specific, with that specific direction.
This is Pete. I'm going to make a motion to take it back to planning commission to update any irregularities or discrepancies from their previous submission.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, this is Sam.
Okay, second by Sam. Uh, could the clerk please call for a roll call though on ordinance, uh, or roll call to send it back to playing commission for ordinance? Zero, one, one, nine, two, one, B.
Selena Stoller.
Aye.
David George.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
Yes.
John Weingart.
Aye.
Cecilia Kobel.
Aye.
Brad DeRimer.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
Samantha Delong.
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, moving on to item number sixteen, zero, one, one, nine, two, one, C. Consideration of a text amendment to the Saxony PUD. To expand area C one of the Saxony PUD for an expansion to the Play School at Saxony. We have Jesse Beauchelle to introduce the resolution.
For the record, Jesse Beauchelle, Planning and Zoning. The item before you is ordinance number zero, one, one, nine, two, one, C. Saxony PUD text amendment. Subject site is located at the corner of one hundred and thirty-first street and Pennington Road. The petitioner is seeking an approval to, uh, of a text amendment to incorporate point seven, five acres from the east. Into, into their, uh, prop, onto their property so that they can create. Build a, uh, gymnasium on the western portion of their property. A parking lot would go on the eastern side. Due to easements and other utility encumbrances, they are unable to build. The gymnasium on the east side, so they are opting to build on the west. Um, as Tony, next slide. So this text amendment is just adding this land into, uh, the C one multifamily residential district, um, of the Saxony PUD. The play school isn't allowed use. Uh, this isn't allowed use. It is really just a, um, cleanup, adding this land into, uh, this, uh, PUD. And the point seven, five acres is currently unannexed, but they will be annexing this land if approved. Uh, as such, staff recommends approval. And Brian Cross with Civil Site Group is on the line as well as Amanda McKeon with the Play School.
Hi, good evening. Uh, for the record, Brian Cross with Civil Site Group, offices at one sixty West Carmel Drive, Carmel, Indiana. Uh, been working with the planning staff on this particular project and the vision for the play school, expanding their. Uh, facility there on one thirty-first street for approximately a year. Um, we've gone through a lot of due diligence and investigation period, uh, not just with planning, but the engineering department as well. Uh, as Jesse mentioned on the description. Um, there are some drainage easements and other utilities, uh, that are quite encumbering the property on the east side of the existing building. Uh, therefore we're, uh, proposing the new addition on to the west side where the existing parking lot is. Uh, but the PUD text amendment, uh, for tonight's consideration at the council. Is for the three quarters of an acres, uh, which is on the east side of the existing facility. Uh, adding that land into the Saxony PUD for the C one district. Uh, we're not making really any, you know, major changes. We're adhering to the existing, uh, development standards and, and. Uh, the matrix already in place by the Saxony PUD. Uh, we have, uh, committed to the property owners, which this, uh, Play School Saxony is purchasing these parcels. Um, do I have the ability to share the screen? See if I can get to. Just as a quick. Are you able to see that?
Yes.
Yes.
So that's, uh, that's the current Hamilton County GIS mapping system. What I've done there is highlighted in this orange. You know, this is the parcel that we are proposing to add to the Saxony PUD. Uh, it's obvious where the existing facility is located here. Uh, so the purchasing of these two parcels, the one along one thirty-first street. Uh, this is actually owned by the Saxony Office Park Association. Uh, it was a remnant of ground when they initially did Saxony. Uh, they've held on to, they've maintained it. Uh, there's also numerous utilities that run through here, including sanitary sewer, uh, and three-phase underground power. Um, this particular parcel is owned by Nicole Albers Cooper. Um, so the two parcels we are assembling to purchase from the rear yard of her property. Would comprise the total point seven, five acres. Uh, so that's the petition before you. Jesse, you did a great job introducing as well. So I'm able to answer any questions you might have. Uh, again, Amanda McKeon, one of the owners and operators of Play School is also available, uh, if needed.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve ordinance zero, one, one, nine, two, one, C?
This is Pete, so I'm moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by, motion by Pete, second by John. Before opening it up for general discussion, um, I'd like to turn it over to Counselor Peterson for a summary of how the Plan Commission analyzes this project.
Again, thank you. I appreciate Jesse certainly giving a very good overview of what ha- happened at planning commission. His notes are great. So thank you, Jesse. I think the only other item which I made mention of in there as well, there was some remonstration from some neighbors. That were abutting to the rear of the property. They talked about two or three different types of fencing. Right? So there was a wire fence, there's a wooden fence. Some of the fence was in disrepair, et cetera. So I think what I added on to that favorable, uh, recommendation from planning commission. Was that the fence issue would be addressed and they would take a singular type of fence that was approved. Okay, by us. In other words, it looked good, uh, and it would encompass that whole territory. So, uh, with my approval, unless anybody has any, um, uh, problems. And then I'll amend my motion to make sure that includes that if we approve this as written, that the fencing around the perimeter. Will be done, uh, in fit and character in one type of fencing that's acceptable to our planning commission. Or acceptable to our planning and zoning department. Thank you.
All right. I will open it for discussion. And I'll ask each member, uh, whether any council members have questions or comments. Counselor Zimmerman, do you have any questions or comments?
Uh, just comment is echo Pete's, uh, sentiments from Plan Commission. I want to reiterate everything, but the fencing is a key component here. Um, I'm in favor of this project as long as that is, is handled, um, correctly.
Counselor Kobel, do you have any questions or comments?
So I, I do have a question. There's part of the, of the, uh, site plan there, the, the. That includes like a little rectangle area. I was wondering why. So, uh, if you go back to the one that the. Brian Cross had, the, the GIS map. Is there a way to go back to that?
Sure.
Wondering where, uh, yeah, right here, this, well, that piece of rectangle there, what? There we go. We're underneath where it says eight hundred and thirteen point one feet, that rectangle, what?
So, so that, that came about with the negotiation of the purchase from Nicole Albers. Um, she wanted to create a common line with her mother's property to the south and just to square that off. So that's how that came about. Uh, it also represents the end of a fence row that Nicole has along one thirty-first street here. Uh, to match into that. Um, so, so that's how that came about.
Okay, but that rectangular area like in yellow underneath there. Uh, you see under, well, so it's not quite a square, whatever, that, that little piece, that rectangular missing piece to make a square. Who owns that?
That's owned by Terry and Lisa Roach here.
Okay, I got you. Okay.
And a portion, a portion of their septic system falls on this property.
Okay, gotcha. Okay. I do have a, a couple of questions, um, and maybe Pete can. Clarify this, because I've, I've received a few emails. Um, so the, from what I understand, it would be a, a six-foot high opaque wood shadowing. Wood shadow box fencing and it, and, and just to be clear, because I'm not sure, is this the entire? So this would come around the whole entire property or just the new?
No.
Parcel.
No, to answer that question, uh, if I may, I'll try to zoom in a little bit here. If you can follow the cursor I have on the eastern portion of this. So we have agreed to a fence along which will eventually be a parking lot on this side. Uh, which will be the common property line to Nicole Albers property. Then along the north line here, uh, to the Terry and Lisa Roach property here. And that really will just encapsulate the, the proposed parking lot that would be in this particular area. Um, if, if I may, I could share to, um. See if I can get a current picture of the, uh. Apologize, just. So this is a current picture of, I took actually the day of Plan Commission hearing, uh, February third. Uh, so that's the current picture of the rear, um, to carriage manor in the back of the property. Uh, this particular fence was installed probably a year ago. Um, this is a five-foot-high aluminum white picket fence. Uh, it does. It does surround the playground area. It meets the state licensing requirements for the care of children at the play school. The difference is that there was previously a five-foot wooden fence along that line. So that was the discussion we had at Planning Commission, was along those lines. So we're certainly willing to work with the Neighborhood Association, which is Carriage Manor, Saxony Residential Association, Inc., and the property owners. This will go to final PUD review and approval once we file design plans. So we would intend to work with the planning staff and come up to a resolution. You know, I might even propose that, you know, we look with the association to define a fence that would be agreeable to the association to the south, and that we would share, you know, with them in that fencing.
Because I've received a few emails. One, some residents wanted to know if you would be, when you would commit to also working with the Saxony Office Park Design Committee, and also the Saxony Residential HOA Board Architectural Committee on this fencing. There's just been a lot of concerns about privacy with that fence where the playground is. I guess the kids come up to residents and they ask some questions and things like that, so I think a lot of those residents would prefer actual, like, wooden fencing with, so that there's actual privacy between the school or the center there and the residents there. And then there was also some questions on the height of the new gym, that it would be too tall.
So I can answer on the gymnasium question. This is very typical. The play school has done two additions with gymnasiums now. The height of the structure is usually between 35 to 36 feet, which is very typical for a single-family home two-story with their roof pitch line to be that tall as well. The ordinance allows up to 45 feet for the PUD Saxony C1 district, so we're well under the requirements there for the height. With respect to the fencing, you know, this particular facility was built, I believe, in 2005, you know, at the same time, actually prior to Carriage Manor in that location. So what I wanted to do is I wanted to share, you know, just a different picture for you on the chronology of this particular development. So if we go to, you know, some different aerial mapping in the past, in 2005, you know, obviously this area was under construction and getting ready to be developed. And then we jump to 2007, you know, that's when the actual play school was constructed, their opening in 2007. These lots were, you know, then developed and platted. So the play school, they want to be a great neighbor, and they want their, you know, their families in the community to, you know, to be safe and use their facility. But as you can see, I mean, they obviously were a presence in the community there very, very early into the Saxony PUD development. This particular fence line here to the south, like I said before, was certainly a wooden fence in the past, but it just became a maintenance and a safety issue, you know, with the children with splinters and things of that nature. So, you know, they went with an aluminum fencing to meet the state licensing requirement, less maintenance, less opportunity for the kids to get hurt. So again, we want to work with the neighbors, we want to work with the association. You did mention the Saxony Design Review Board. That is a requirement. Anytime you make an improvement on a property in Saxony, you are required to submit to the Design Review Board. This particular fence for the aluminum picket, a five-foot fence, was submitted and approved by the Designer Review Board as well. So I hope that answers the question. I'd like to push this towards the PUD committee, you know, once they finalize their design plans. We just have concepts at this point. I will also make note that the fence line itself, where it's currently located, is about four feet north of the property line, with Carriage Manor lots and the rideaway of Elster Way. So there is an opportunity to do maybe even some dual fencing there. May not be the easiest to maintain with grass and whatnot, but, you know, that could be something we could work with, the Saxony Residential Association on that side of things, to put a fence along their property line proper, whereas the playground fencing, which is being utilized, is actually four feet inside of the play school's property.
Okay, how tall is the current gym right now? Is it, so is the new gym going to be the same height as the existing one, or is this one taller than?
Well, I can share with you some schematic elevations. Are you able to see these schematic building elevations?
Yes.
Okay. So these are prepared by current architecture. The play school's utilized current for the last three different building additions, including in Carmel, as well as Play School Arbor Village. The Arbor Village location at 116th and Hoosier Road is currently under construction. So if you really wanted a physical, you know, presence to know what's going on, you know, that's a pretty good idea right there. But with the pitch roof and the height, if you were to extend the existing facility, there is no gym in the existing facility, to answer your question. So the gymnasium portion is, you know, this area here, which is 35 to 36 feet tall. The existing hip line of the roof on the existing play school is about 30 feet tall.
Okay, thank you.
Councilor Vare, do you have any questions or comments?
I do. Just a follow-up question, because forgive me, I'm not sure if I heard exactly the specific answer on this. I'm sorry, back to the fencing. So I understood as Counselor Kobel just mentioned, the six-foot shadow box wooden fence is what is being requested of the petitioner? And I'm not hearing specifically if that is being committed to by the petitioner or not. Can we just address that very specifically, for my understanding and for the record, if you please?
Yes. We have not committed to building a new six-foot fence along the Carriage Manor adjacent property as of today. The new fence was installed per the Design Review Board and approved by Saxony, and that is the playground fence that is currently in operation. So we have not made a commitment, but we would continue to work with Carriage Manor, the property owners and their association to derive a solution for that, yes.
Thank you. That's all for me, thank you.
Councilor Weingart, do you have any questions or comments?
No questions or comments.
Councilor DeLong, do you have any questions or comments?
None for me.
Councilor Peterson, do you have any questions or comments?
Just a clarifying comment. I want to make sure that the remonstrator that was at the Planning Commission asked for consistency in fencing. Didn't say it had to be shadow box, didn't say it had to be white aluminum, didn't have to say anything else. And what I said at the tail end of that meeting was the fact that, yes, I would think we could make it all consistent, right? So the motion that I had made and then subsequently amended was to make sure that the fencing on the property is consistent throughout the property. And I appreciate the petitioner's knowledge of, you know, if there's kids talking in between a fence there, guess what? Who was there first? Well, the play school was there first. So if you're going to be sitting in your backyard with schools in session, there're going to be kids coming up to you and saying hi, you know, that's the way it works when you're a kid. So again, I appreciate all that history, but my clarification is, they asked just for consistency. They didn't ask for a wooden fence back, they didn't ask for aluminum fence back, they asked for consistency in the fencing all the way around. And that motion that I made still stands, and I'm pretty sure that amendment needs a second. Am I right, Chris? I don't believe I heard a second on that, so, just FYI, those are my comments.
Yeah, you're correct on that, Pete.
Counselor DeReemer, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions.
Counselor George, do you have any comments or questions?
I was just going to ask the same thing, but it's nine o'clock, so I'm not. I think Pete summarized it. I was going to ask very similar to what Jocelyn heard, which was a little, we just hadn't heard a direct answer. And I actually got emails that were more about the, you know, not being able to see the kids and things like that, but if Pete was there, I wasn't in the meeting, so I'm going to go by what those guys heard, which is consistency. So as long as that's in the motion, I'm supported.
I did receive numerous emails about the privacy, as well as the consistency. Is my only comment that I'll make, but we do have a motion that Pete has added for consistency along this. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second it.
Okay, so motion made by Pete, second by Todd. We'll call for a vote to approve with the foresaid amendment, ordinance 0119-21C. Could the clerk please take a roll call vote?
President Stoller, can we state the motion? One more, I'm sorry to be very precise about this, but can we state the motion that is being voted on right now?
Yeah, this is Pete. I made the motion to approve as-is, and then I amended it with the fencing that surrounds the center, wherever they put fencing up on a border fence, the fencing will be consistent throughout the entire property.
Thank you. Yes.
Pete, you had also said that it also had to be accepted by the Planning and Zoning Department.
Well, it's going to go through TAC anyway, so I think that goes regardless of me saying that. Jesse or, you know, Tony, you want to jump in there and affirm that?
Yeah, that's correct. It'll also go to PUD.
Okay.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Okay, ready for a vote?
Yes.
Okay, Selena Stoller.
Aye.
David George.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
Yes.
John Weingart.
Aye.
Cecilia Kobel.
Aye.
Brad DeReemer.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
Samantha DeLong.
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Motion passes, we'll move on to item number 17, 122120G. Consideration of a text amendment to planned unit development ordinance number 091916E, also known as the Vermillion PUD, to reduce the minimum front setback. We have Tony Bagado to introduce the resolution.
Yes, good evening. This item has been before you for first reading, as well as public hearing at Planning Commission last meeting. This is a rebellion text amendment, basically because of some changes from the DNR, as well as Army Corps of Engineers, they had to modify the drainage on the rear of the lots, and so six lots, they're requesting a reduced front yard setback from 30 feet down to 20. It's those six lots identified in the presentation, if you can see those. Again, only impacts six lots. We did not have any concerns from the public, and the Planning Commission supported it. Staff recommends approval.
Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 122120G?
Motion approved. Oh, go ahead, Pete. I'll second it.
Motion by Pete, second by Todd. Pete, before opening it up for general discussion, Counselor Peterson, do you have any further summary from the Planning Commission on this project?
Nope, Tony did a great job.
Okay. Okay, we'll now open it up for discussion. Counselor Zimmerman, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions.
Counselor Kobel, do you have any comments or questions?
None.
Counselor Vare, do you have any comments or questions?
None, thank you.
Counselor Weingart, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you.
Counselor DeLong, do you have any comments or questions?
None.
Counselor DeReemer, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions.
Counselor Peterson, do you have any further comments or questions?
No.
Counselor George, do you have any further comments or questions?
Yeah, just real quick, I'm not trying to prolong the meeting, but I know that Brad brings this up correctly in Britton Falls several times, where the, either the front or the rear setbacks are many times very small. So I think, Tony, you clarified it, but I just wanted to state it again. This was done, this was put together, and then after that, some things changed with the floodway, and that's what's created this need. So it's something that is after the fact, just so we don't get into a habit of doing that, that this is something that occurred through some changes in some of the floodway that was after the fact of being approved.
That is correct, and they're also doing it because they want to keep more of the rear yard usable for patios, so they could keep the 30-foot setback, but there would be a significant loss in the rear yard, so.
Yep, that's kind of where I thought they were going with it. Okay, no further comments?
Okay, I have no further comments, so I'll close the discussion and call for a vote to approve ordinance 122120G, and ask the clerk to take a roll call.
Selena Stoller.
Aye.
David George.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
Yes.
John Weingart.
Aye.
Cecilia Kobel.
Aye.
Brad DeReemer.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
Samantha DeLong.
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare.
Aye.
A motion passed.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to 011921, a consideration of a rezone of 20.86 acres from PD to PUDR. Property is located at the southeast corner of 126th and Brook School Road. Project is known as the Preserve at Gray Eagle, and will consist of approximately 155 residential garden-style units, master downtown homes, and double-rain style homes. This is the final reading. We have Tony Bagado to introduce the resolution.
Yeah, thank you again. This item is for final reading. It was previously approved on today's agenda for the economic development agreement, and this is the final stage. It went through first reading. I mean, as mentioned before, several years of discussion with the community at Gray Eagle and even Greystone. This went through Planning Commission last meeting. Again, highlight overview, 155 units max, with apartments and garden-style cottages. And the architecture is kind of an English colonial style that was approved by PUD Committee. And here's some of the smaller architectural plans. And again, it'll offer improvements to maintain the golf course and improve the clubhouse facility, and the Planning Commission has supported it, and staff's recommending approval. The petitioner is on the line for questions, does not plan on providing a presentation
Do I have a motion to approve ordinance 011921?
Motion approved.
Motion by John, second by, who seconded?
That was Pete.
Second by Pete. I'll open it up for discussion. Counselor Zimmerman, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions.
Counselor Kobel, do you have comments or questions?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Counselor Vare, do you have any comments or questions?
I do not, thank you.
Counselor Weingart, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions, thank you.
Counselor DeLong, do you have any comments or questions?
None.
Counselor Peterson, do you have any comments or questions?
None.
Counselor DeReemer, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions or comments.
Counselor George, do you have any comments or questions?
I do not, thank you.
Given that, I do not have any comments or questions. I'll close the discussion and call for a vote to approve ordinance 011921, and ask the clerk to take a roll call.
Selena Stoller.
Aye.
David George.
Aye.
Pete Peterson.
Yes.
John Weingart.
Aye.
Cecilia Kobel.
Aye.
Brad DeReemer.
Aye.
Todd Zimmerman.
Aye.
Samantha DeLong.
Aye.
Jocelyn Vare.
Aye.
The motion passes.
The motion passes. Moving on to item number nineteen, 021521D, consideration of a rezone from ENI-sixty-nine overlay to PUDM for a mixed-use PUD. We have Tony Bagado to introduce the resolution.
Good evening, the subject property is located off of USA Parkway and south of IKEA Way. There's two planned areas. The main one before each night is the residential, but there is a remainder commercial that's not finalized. This project will have over two-hundred units of single, single-family type units and townhomes that are adjacent to the Fishers District. It's being developed by Thompson Thrift and will connect to that, that Fishers District to the north. There will include amenities and a greenway trail. And here's the plan, the constant plan that shows area A where the residential is located, and then area B. Staff's still working through some of the details of the PUD and, and the engineering side, and just presenting first reading tonight, so this is for any comments or questions. Here's some architectural plans. There might be revised ones in your packets, because I did have this presented a different time. I received some plans, so I don't quite know if these are the correct ones, but it's similar in fashion. One, one and a half stories for the paired villas and then three-story townhomes that are closer to the hotel to the north. Here's just a list of some of the amenities they're including. There's a clubhouse with a pool, other kind of recreational amenities. Again, I talked about an open lineal park along the, currently on the east property line, and it will provide connectivity throughout the neighborhood as well into, into Fishers District directly. And with that, staff is just recommending first reading, and the petitioner is on the line.
Does the petitioner have any comments?
Yes, thank you, President Stoller. This is Steve Harden representing Thompson Thrift. I've got with me from Thompson Thrift Eric Wojcik and Garrett Linville, and our planner from our office, Mark Leach. And if, Tony, do you have our packet there that you're able to walk through? We can, we can use your exhibits, they're basically the same. So I, I'll just add a few things, Tony did a great job. Just kind of some context for everybody. This property is currently zoned EN employment node, so it would allow for commercial offices to be developed on the twenty-five acres. As the development team has worked with the city economic development and planning teams on this proposal, you know, the idea here is that the land that is zoned currently for office development, it looks unlikely to find, to be attractive with, for the types of offices and development that the city might like to see, because it's, it's far off USA Parkway, and it would be located behind the Forum Building. And so that this offers an opportunity for residential transition from the existing Walnut Hills single-family development, which is to the southeastern portion of our property, and then also to the High Point Ridge condominium multifamily development that's up on the east side, the northern part of our property. So this, this prop, this project is about a sixty-three million dollar investment into the community, and we believe from a planning perspective, it offers better transition than going directly from the residential into commercial. The Walnut Hills neighborhood, we had a meeting with the HOA Board last week, and we also met with the High Point Ridge Owners Association last week. And then we have, we will be having another all-resident meeting for Walnut Hills. I believe it'll be sometime next week. And to, you know, to share with them the plan, get their feedback. And we, you know, it's hard for me to get twelve people of my church to agree on the same thing. We don't expect to get all the homeowners in the two neighborhoods to agree on, do they want fencing? Do they want direct access to the trail? So we are trying to gather all that information, but Eric Wojcik is on the call here as well. I think he would, he would affirm that we think that, you know, we're gonna, we're getting good dialogue and getting some good feedback from people about what they like and don't like, particularly about the trail and whether there's, you know, some type of direct connection or, or not. We also had a question previously, and Councilman George, we thank you for your question about the number of covered garages that would be offered. I think we had an original statement from Thompson Thrift was they thought they're around about thirty percent of the units would have a covered garage opportunity. They've gone back after Councilman George's question and really tried to look at that more closely, and it looks like it's going to be more close to fifty percent, not thirty percent. So all of the townhomes will have two-car garages. So a hundred percent of the townhomes will have garages, and then there's another, I think, eighty-five detached garages. Well, it seems that my time is up. President Stoller's not-
Sounds like somebody's at your front door.
That's me! And I happen to have a pack of dogs, so I'm doing the best I can here, sorry about that, everyone.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure if you were gonging me or not, but I can, I can wrap up. We did want to give that feedback that we do have about, you know, about fifty percent of the units will be able to have covered, or enclosed garages, which is a significant percentage of that. So we thank Councilman George for his asking them to take a look, closer look at that. And then we will continue to provide updates as we go from here to Plan Commission on the discussions that we've had with the neighbors, and so we, we appreciate that. And Eric Wojcik and his team are here, so if you have any questions for us at first reading, we'd be happy to take those and take notes and work on those as we move from here to the, to the Plan Commission. Thank you very much.
I'm now going to open discussion and ask the council members if they have any questions. Councilor Kobel, do you have any questions or comments?
Just, I, I was wondering about the garages too. So what about the other fifty percent that are not closed garages? Are those going to be covered with some kind of covered part?
Yeah, so I'm going to ask Eric, Eric, Eric's team did some research on this after we last talked. So I think there's a range of different multifamily developments have different percentages. I think you'll, you'll hear from Eric that this will be top of the class throughout, you know, Fishers, Hamilton County for, you know, for, for developments that don't have, you know, a parking garage, you know, the structured parking. So I think this is, this, this compares extremely favorable, yeah. So, so just like you'd have in most many multifamily developments, you'll have, some multifamily developments will have, everybody just parks in the parking lot, and they walk to their unit. The more we've seen in recent years, the developments have gone to offering a mixture of attached enclosed garages for some, but not, not all residents are going to want to pay for, for the enclosed garages. But Eric, would you want to just kind of weigh in a little bit on what your research showed and how this project compares to that?
Sure, yeah, thanks, Steve. So Steve, and, you know, after we talked with David George, we, we did a little survey of the Fishers area. We looked at a number of developments, Reveal on Cumberland, District at Saxony, the Hamilton, the Flats at Fishers Marketplace, Pullman Point, Prairie Lakes Apartments, and Bella Vista Apartments. And of those developments, only two had more garages, you know, attached, covered garages than what we will be offering, and that was District at Saxony and the Hamilton. And, and with that, our fifty percent that Steve had indicated is, is really far above the, the next best. Some had as few as twenty-three percent garages, others had twenty-six, thirty-six, and fifteen percent garages. So yes, and all those other instances, they utilize the surface parking with no coverage, with no cover overhead, and that's what we plan for the other fifty percent of our units.
Would you be willing to look at half of that fifty percent be covered? Like, would, would you look at that, or? So you'd have a variety, closed, closed garages, a carport kind of situation, and then surface parking?
We could certainly look at that, we could certainly look at that. You know, it's somewhat unlikely that it would bear out in the open market. Obviously, there's not a lot of competition, there's not a lot of other developments that utilize that. I don't know how that would work in the Midwest. We do see that in Phoenix and the other projects that are like ours with the duplex, but obviously Phoenix with the hundred-and-twenty-degree heat, you know, the coverage is, is very valuable, and people pay up for that. I don't know how that would work here, but yes, in answer to your question, we certainly could look at that.
I, I think that people would look at it here too, just because it does rain during rainy season, and then obviously, you know, with, with snow and whatnot, but I'd appreciate you looking into that. The other question I have is ownership of the linear trail. Is the city, what, what's the city's thoughts on who's going to maintain it and own that? And, and lighting, will there be lighting along the trail, or is it just going to be just a paved trail?
Sure, Councilman, Councilwoman Kobel, this is Steve. So the current plan is that Thompson Thrift would construct the trail and then dedicate the land with the trail to the city, so it would be a city-owned trail. So it'll be open to the public for anyone of the neighbors who live nearby or to the south of it, if it eventually gets connected to the further south. So it would be owned and maintained by the city. As far as the lights go, you know, currently, the idea, the thinking is, we had that question came up last week. We're talking to some of the neighbors, and the Thompson Thrift team kind of thought about that some more, and it feels like the, probably the appropriate thing is to have it just be a dust till dawn type betrayal, so you wouldn't have lights on it. So that's, that's the plan currently.
And I think, Steve, not to interrupt you, this is Scott. And I did pull over, I'm still plowing, but I did pull over, just so everyone knows from a safety perspective. But the, I think the idea here too, on the trail, is we really believe that, and David, we've talked about this trail connectivity piece for some time. Because it's going to hopefully connect a lot of different neighborhoods to this, it really does set up nicely as a public amenity, and not necessarily a private one, where we get into who can be on there, who can't be on there. We've, we've fallen prey to that before, and it really isn't for the betterment of the greater good of the community. So I feel strongly that it should be owned by the city and maintained by the city, because we want this to be a trail that anyone can use in that general region. And I do think the dust till dawn side of that policy is probably the appropriate one, just because it's consistent with the vast majority of the rest of our trails. We don't have a lot of lit trails anywhere else in the community, and then safety comes up, and are we going to have police patrol and things of that nature? So from an administration standpoint, I feel as though we're in alignment with, with Thompson Thrift on this issue.
Thanks, Mayor, I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Councilor Vare, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I do, sorry about that. Sorry for my delay. I think for, for me, I am very interested in establishing some general standards to be able to evaluate different projects. And I know that we can't compare apples to apples each time, but what I've learned with a proposal that we discussed earlier this evening is residents, and rightly so, are very concerned about issues like density, traffic, safety. And I want to be sure for me that I'm, I'm setting that up in a standard way so we evaluate and make good decisions for our community. And one of the other standards I want to understand better is a very specific question here. I understand the proposal is two-hundred-and-fifty units. They are all rental units, is that right? And if so, has the estimated monthly rental for these units been established? And I'd like to, help me understand and put that up against, we just said affordable is considered six-fifty to eleven-fifty a month. That's considered affordable? So could you answer that question about if they're all rentals? And if so, what the range of monthly rent would be?
Sure, Councilwoman Vare, this is Steve. Eric, you can correct me if I don't say this correctly, but these are market rate and the anticipated, the neighbors asked us about what the rents were, and Eric explained to them that the rents would range likely from about fourteen-hundred dollars up to thirty-two-hundred dollars.
Thank you, that's helpful, I appreciate it. That's the only question I have right now, thanks.
Councilor Zimmerman, do you have any comments or questions?
Not at this time, thank you.
Councilor Weingart, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions or comments at this time, thank you.
Councilor DeLong, do you have any comments or questions?
None for me.
Councilor DeRimer, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions.
Councilor Peterson, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions, and I'll give it a first reading unless David has any questions.
David, do you have any comments or questions?
Yes, I've got quite a few. I think we need to look at this very intently. This is an area where it is currently three percent tax-based, and we're going to shift it to something less. So I know that the idea is maybe something won't come right away, but it might. And many times, it's good to wait for the right thing, so if this is it, that's fine. But I wouldn't want to just say that nothing will ever come from an office use. So I did a couple things after our last meeting, and I tried to research. It sounded like this had been done before, and Eric, I went to your website, and it looked like something called Grandstone at Sunrise in Peoria, Arizona, was there, and that was the only one that I saw, and it is in construction. So it is not in place, so to speak, to be able to, to look at something that's been there for a while. So I just want to make sure that that was the case, because essentially, I look at this, that it's condo density, but it's really single-family residential that's rental. So I think it's important, we need to get some things too, when you get the density of a condo, but you're trying to do a single-family residential. It kind of along the lines of that, and again, no particular order, but some of these buildings, I'm trying to get a sense of how close they are, because it looks like you have a little sidewalk in front. But I guess what would be the front and then the rear, you have kind of like a little stoop. So I'm trying to get a sense of how close those are. The last thing is, or the next thing is, in our previous meeting, you had talked about one, two, and three bedrooms, and the three bedrooms were pretty high. A lot of times you'll see in a rental range of maybe five percent, but this was like thirty to forty percent, which I think over time, we need to view these things as what is it going to look like in ten or fifteen years and not right off the bat? So I think it's important to understand that, that one, two, and three situation. And then the last thing is, and I mentioned before, Steve, when we talked last week, you had already set up the meetings with the HOA meetings. These are the residents that I represent, I simply just want to be in the meeting so that I can hear what they say. You told me that it was an oversight, but it sounds like a second meeting has already been set up, and I don't know about it. So with that, I'd rather hold on first reading, not have that, work through some of these issues with the neighbors, because what's going to happen is it'll go to first reading, go to a Plan Commission, then it'll come back, and aha, it's time for a vote before we can try to work these things out. And we just had that on the hand and some of the other proposals, so I'm trying to get ahead of it with this by making that request. Let's wait for thirty days, have first reading, it'll give time to me with the neighbors, work some things out on the site plan. And the last, last thing is on the garages, it wasn't exactly what I was asking, but two comments there. When you say fifty percent, my belief is it's technically thirty percent on the two-hundred-and-ten kind of villas. And then the condos have two garages per condo. So that's going to arbitrarily increase your number to something higher, if I'm thinking of that right. So the condos are going to be a hundred percent, but then the others are going to be thirty percent. So it makes it look like it's a little bit higher than maybe it is. And on the others, I always viewed this as, when I first started to hear about it, it's more of a single-family product with an internal garage that you are renting, you're just not buying. And maybe it's less square footage, but it would include, and I guess it's garage night, it would have included garages, but I think what you're meaning by the garages, it's just a detached garage kind of built around the site, and it's not really embedded in the particular living unit so that somebody can come in and, and go in with the groceries. Maybe it's got snow like today or rain, but that's what I was looking for, was a type of product that had an internal garage that you could utilize and not just have an external garage built around the site. And that's what I had up until now, thanks.
Dave, Councilman George, this is Steve. So just a couple of thoughts there. Number one, you're, you're correct about our conversation last week, and we have not set the meeting out, set yet. But as I mentioned to you last week, just to give you the heads up, we were thinking of setting that for February twenty-fifth, which I mentioned to you last week, and we have not sent the letters out inviting people to that yet. I just was giving people the update, because we were asked to make sure we're updating everybody about the plans to reach out. So absolutely, we want you to be able to be- So absolutely, we want you to be able to be invited to attend that, that meeting. So thank, thank you for that, and I apologize again if there was any miscommunication on our part or misunderstanding. As far as the garages go, just to be super clear, there, the, there are 210 paired villas, and there are 85 planned detached garages. So that's 40% of the paired villas would have a garage offered for them. And then the 40 townhomes all have attached, you know, tuck-under garages. And those are two-car garages for the townhomes. So when you add the 40 townhomes that would have garages, and then the 85 others, that's a total of 125 garages out of 250 units. So that's the 50%.
But the villas are detached. They're just garages that are built around the site, not incorporated into the living unit.
Yes, sir.
And then the setback in between the buildings?
I don't know the answer to that.
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. The setback is 10 feet, David. That, that allows us to get a five-foot walk, two and a half feet on either side for some low-lying shrubs or some mulch or rock gravel. Also allows us our fire rating, since this is the IRC, we only need 10-foot separation. Actually, we can go closer, but we keep it that for the utilities that run in between these. And then the backyard, you asked about the stoops. Each paired villa, which is part of the unique offering of these single-family rentals, each one has a private fenced backyard, which is eight feet deep, and it spans the entire width of the unit, which is approximately 30 feet. So it provides a very nice little outdoor space where you can fit a grill or, or a little patio chair to sit and enjoy the outside. I think those were the two dimensions that you asked about.
Yeah, and then any previous projects? It sounded like you had done some, but it looked like in my research that it was one, only one, and it was in construction.
Yes, so you're correct. The Sunrise, or Grandstone at Sunrise is under construction. That's the paired villa. We do have Dayton Station in Aurora, Colorado. That's the townhome. That is actually completed and leased up. That's the same floor plan for the three and four-bed townhomes that we're planning here. We also have two more projects that are set to close in the next 30 to 60 days that are through design, and we're simply awaiting our construction closing. So, so, and there is another project in Franklin, Tennessee, which is another townhome project that is under construction as well, but not complete.
But again, townhomes are fairly well-known, whether you rent or own. I was more concerned with the villas.
Okay. And I have a plethora of information. I'd be happy to send you some info on our competitors, the guys who are doing this in Phoenix. There's about 8,000 of these under construction in Phoenix as we speak. There's about 4,000 that have been completed in years prior, and there's another 5,000 that's in backlog, and I can send you that report from Burkadia. Gives you a little bit more detail.
Any other northern, any northern cities?
Denver is, is probably the furthest north. A villa has two projects there. I can find some information on that as well. That's probably the furthest north.
Okay. So Pete, I know you said first reading, courtesy, if you could not have that, so we can work on that 30 days, that would be my request.
I am struggling with that, David, only because I don't see through the process we're going to go through what that adds or doesn't add. I would probably ask staff if there's any timelines that the petitioner has with respect to the property owners, with respect to any of their timing on things, what that does before, you know, basically granting what you're asking me to do.
I'm not aware of any timing, Pete, but I don't know if Thompson Thrift wants to add comment.
Sure, I'm happy to speak to our purchase agreement with the, with the land seller. We do move into our extensions this summer, so I, I think it's actually June as our expiration date. So I think from a time standpoint, that, that would not pose any issue presently.
Okay, then I don't, then I don't have a problem with it. I'll, I'll.
Thank you.
Okay. So we do not have first reading on that, just to clarify. Is that correct, Pete?
Hey, Tony, this is Chris, and maybe Steve, if you're still on the call. Have you guys scheduled a plan commission public hearing yet?
We, we, we've not sent the notices out. We may, it may have gone into the newspaper. I don't, I don't recall. Mark Leach, you're on here, Mark. Has that been published in the newspaper or sent to the newspaper?
It'll be published tomorrow, in tomorrow's edition of the Current Fishers and the Current Guys.
Okay, yeah, so thank you, Chris, for that. We haven't sent letters out for the public hearing, but we, I think we, it sounds like we had to have gotten those out to stay on the, the March. So that's the only thing that I could think of that's been scheduled.
And Steve, I get, Steve, I guess I'd just leave it up to you and Thompson Thrift to comment on that. I mean, you guys certainly have a right to go to plan commission for the public hearing, kind of irrespective of the first reading, right? So I wanted to know whether you'd be willing to bump that to April or carry forward with March, right?
Yeah, thank you for asking. I appreciate Pete's comments and Councilman George's comments as well. I mean, I think we just heard from Eric that, you know, they're not under a, a time crunch. There's no need to have to rush anything. I think, I guess we would just ask that, you know, it's a productive period of time. So, you know, Councilman George, as we shared with you before, our plan was that we would have the, the all neighborhood meeting for the Walnut Hills folks on the 25th, which we would plan to continue to do that. We'll make sure that you're invited for that as well. And then I think we just, I think we've answered the questions other than, I'm trying to think of what to be doing in this 30-day period that we would have, I guess we're going to, Thompson Thrift said they would look at the concept of carports, and I think they've answered the questions on the setbacks and the other locations. I'm not, I'm not sure if I have any other notes here of what specific homework that they should be, we should be working on between now and a month from now. Besides, we can, we'll have another neighbor meeting. And if that's, if that's the purpose of it, then that's no problem at all. We're happy to do that as well. So. Councilman George, is there anything else in particular you wanted Thompson Thrift to be working on between now and then?
David, you're muted.
Sorry about that.
No problem.
Yeah, so it was really just to take a look at the, some of the garages, whether they can be internally linked, and then just some of the, just the density and setbacks. I don't know if other council members have the same, but I just wanted to explore that further.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I, I can respond to the garages, that, you know, we're offering dual products here intentionally, some are attached, some are detached, because the detached paired villas are our prototype. We're actually working on another prototype that we hope to utilize sometime next year in 2022 in cities like Minneapolis and so forth, but we aren't quite there yet. And so as far as the detached garages being linked, the product relies on the detached garage orientation with the product, the duplexes. And that's much what you'll see, David, in the, in the other projects that I'll send you, and I will send you that information. And that's how we're able to cluster and get the density and, and offer that parking. So I can, I can respond quickly and say that's, that will not be available on this project.
Right, thank you. Yeah, we, Chris, to answer your question, we don't have any objection to taking another month to, to work through things. We're, we're happy to do that.
Okay. Thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on to item 021521F, consideration of a text amendment to the amend the West Concept Plan in the Marina PUD. We have Tony Begato to introduce the resolution to us tonight.
Yes, good evening again, Tony Begato. This is an amendment to the Marina Village PUD. This PUD goes back to approvals even in Noblesville's time when the dock, Marina Dock and Storage was put in place. Then we had different amendments to the PUD over time. There, there was two sections of the PUD. You had an east concept plan on the east side of Olio that had more of a commercial office layout with some residential, and then the west side was solely residential. As the council knows, we have acquired the land on the east side and we're building the new park. And as part of the preliminary plans for the park, we, there was, the city was having conversations through A and F with the county about the entrance to the park, and they did not want the current location proposed where it is unless it was to align with the, the driveway to the west being relocated. So without this proposal, our driveways would have to be shifted 90 feet to the south, and it would impact the design of the park. And so with that, conversations with Gordon Byers, representative for Marina Partnership Limited, they want to amend the concept plan on the west side to provide for a restaurant use, which you can see here on the right side of this image, because it's, it's facing the wrong direction, but it was the best way to lay it out. But they'll redo the parking lot, move their entrance to align with the city's proposed entrance, and then redo the landscaping to provide better screening of the boat storage there today and additional parking. The proposal is to include a multi-level restaurant with a second, two stories, and then a basement level and a patio area. So it's not to exceed 5,000 square feet, including, and then the patio as well. And staff is actually supportive of this. We think it'd be a good use along the Marina, and then as well as redoing the landscaping and realigning the driveway with the city's park would be supported by staff as well. And again, this is for first reading. It's planning on going to Plan Commission in March, so here for any questions.
Okay, I'm going to open up to discussion. Councilor Zimmerman, do you have any comments or questions?
Not at this time.
Councilor Cobal, do you have any comments or questions?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Councilor Vare, do you have any comments or questions?
I, do you have a question and maybe just a little clarification, asking, Tony, if you don't mind? So it was a surprise to have to move the entrance in the first place? Like, that wasn't anticipated, right?
For the city's park?
Correct.
Correct, yeah. My understanding was it was, that was not anticipated until A and F was discussing it with the county, since Olio is managed by the county.
Okay, okay. And it's 90 feet? So.
Correct. There, the Marina's driveway is 90, about 90 feet south of where our proposed location is, so we'd have to shift ours. And if we did that, there's trees in that area that would have to be removed, which is not ideal when you're trying to create a nature park, as well as it just impacts the flow of the proposed site plan we have, which works really well. So our intent is to keep it where it is, and if the county is willing to approve it there, if we can align up both projects.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I, I wasn't clear about like the sequence of, it seemed like a little domino effect. And, and then the result is getting permission to build a, a restaurant. So I'm, I don't know. Can you share anything more? I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to link the sequen, sequence of events together, and I'm.
Well, I mean, in my discussions with Gordon Byers, they, and I don't know if Gordon's on the line, but they were intending on trying to propose a restaurant here anyways. And as we talked about internally with staff, I mean, I think given the Marina is already a commercial use with the boat storage, and adding that to the boat launch there, I think the restaurant is an actual use we would support. And so when staff was talking to them about relocating their driveway, they said, well, we need to do a text amendment, and as part of that, we'll commit to relocating our driveway. So it was something they were talking about before, is my understanding, and then it's just being tied with the driveway, because we're able to make that work on our end as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you for filling in the blanks. Like, it's late, and I maybe just couldn't follow all that. So thank you for the clarification. I'm good now. Thank you.
Councilor Weingart, do you have any comments or questions?
At this point, no. Thank you.
Councilor DeLong, do you have any comments or questions?
Not at this time.
Councilor DeRimer, do you have any comments or questions?
No questions or comments.
Councilor Peterson, do you have any comments or questions?
None.
Councilor George, do you have any comments or questions?
Real quick, I have the same questions, I think, that Jocelyn did, when I saw the word restaurant. And I mean this honestly, I'm just kind of curious if, I'm going to date myself, but the Blue Heron, if I remember, is one of us called that. They've got pretty loud music sometimes and things like that, and this is kind of a quieter portion of the reservoir. And if things like that were to be approved, and then people would say, hey, how did that get approved? And I'm just kind of curious how, or what type of restaurant it would be, what type of things, because now's the time to ask.
Well, it's going to be, I mean, mainly a sit-down restaurant. We did make sure there was no kind of drive-through aspect, so it wouldn't become a fast-food restaurant, but the intent is to be a sit-down with a patio. You know, we can look at that more detail through the tack process, as well as we, they would have to follow any of our noise ordinances, which I know, again, is not ideal to have neighbors complain and enforce things, but we do have noise ordinances in place for that reason, to protect the residents. But it's definitely something we can look through more carefully when we go through the tack process.
And like an outdoor seating, that, I think people would understand that. I'm just trying to think through if it would become, hey, Saturday night, we're going to get a band outside. I'm not saying that's bad. I'm only saying that residents should know that's what the approval would have. That's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I mean, that's not listed specifically, but we can take a look at that before we go to Plan Commission.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to give ordinance 021521D first reading?
Yeah, Pete, first reading.
Thank you. Moving on, 021521F, consideration of a text amendment. Oh, wait a second. That's the ones we just did. I'm sorry. It's getting late. We're running to, this is getting long. So we are on the, the, one of the final items here. Number 21, R0211, R021521F, consideration of an exemption from the Commercial Use Limit Overlay Zone and the City's Unified Development Code Ordinance Development Standards, Chapter Six, to allow for the operation of a vaccination site by the City of Fisher's Health Department. We have Tony Begato to introduce the resolution.
Yes, good evening, and I don't know if, Chris could be available for any questions as well, but this is, this property was put in the overlay zone to allow only grocery stores over this, in a building this large. And so when we were going through the process of creating the vaccination site for the health department, Chris and I discussed that we need to go through and exempt the property, the use from the property for this health department exemption, as well as it was basically my intention to exempt it from Chapter Six as well, which would relate to any signage or other outdoor storage facilities. I mean, basically, we see this, it's a public health issue and crisis, and so this is definitely needed, and we want to make sure we make accommodations for the health department to achieve the goals of getting people vaccinated as quickly as possible.
Thank you for that, Tony. Do I have a motion to approve R021521F?
Mr. Pete, I make a motion to approve noting, noting that this is a temporary removal. It's not permanent, correct, Tony?
Correct, and it's only applies to the city as an exemption, nobody else.
Thank you.
Okay, motion by Pete. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by John. Now I'll open it up for discussion. Councilor Zimmerman, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments or questions. It's great use of the space, so I appreciate the city's initiatives.
Councilor Cobal, do you have any comments or questions?
None. Thank you.
Councilor Vare, do you have any comments or questions?
None. Thank you.
Councilor Weingart, do you have any comments or questions?
No. None.
Councilor DeLong, do you have any comments or questions?
None.
Councilor DeRimer, do you have any comments or questions?
Just doing a great job there. Wish we could get more vaccines for our residents. Thank you.
Councilor Peterson, do you have any comments or questions?
No.
Councilor George, do you have any comments or questions?
I don't, just wanted to slip in, you did a good job tonight, doing it remotely.
Thank you. This is, this is a marathon meeting, it seems like here. I just want to say on this, you know, I think our health department has done great. Greatly appreciative of Monica and her update tonight, and glad that we can provide our health department with such a site to provide as many vaccinations as they can for our community. So I really appreciate us moving forward with this. I'll close the discussion and call for a vote on resolution R021521F. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right. We will move on to regular items. Any other unfinished business, unfinished or new business?
No, this is Chris. I just want to thank everybody for your flexibility tonight and jumping on this call virtually for the council meeting. Also want to thank city staff. Tracy Gaynor and his team are at city hall right now to ensure that we could live stream tonight's meeting. So I want to give a special thanks to them as well.
I hope they can all make it home safely. I hope our city crews will help them do so.
Yeah, Mayor, are you going to just provide them an escort home with the, with the plow?
Yeah, something. You know, I hope everybody can make it home safely. Moving into the community comment, as I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting, any comments submitted by residents have been received and distributed among the council. These comments will be placed on the record of this month's meeting as if the members presented those comments during the community comment section. I doubt if this is the case, but is there anyone at city hall with, that's waiting to make a comment to this marathon meeting? Tracy, can you confirm that there's no one there? I'm going to assume that there's no one there with that. I'm going to close the community comment. Do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Motion by Todd, second by John. We will.
I don't think you got that right.
Everybody be safe if they're going home.
Whatever. Let's get out of here.
That's right. All right. Have a great evening everyone.
Josh is shaking his head no. He wants to stay on longer, I think, guys.
I'm going to just write down two names.
That's right.